We'll call a regular meeting in New Ulm City Council for September 19, 2017, 4:30 PM. Order first item on the agendas, your consent agenda items, what's your wishes?
I'll offer a motion to approve those.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda items, any discussion on any? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close no, motion carries. Item number two A, I think we'll skip that and bring that up at the end if it's okay with everybody else. It's the last item. So we'll go on item two B, conduct a public hearing to consider a request on the Green Mill Best Western Plus at 2101 South Broadway for noise variance to allow live bands to perform in the parking lot during the Rock-October Fest. Rock-October.
Rocktoberfest.
Rocktoberfest, there you go. Oktoberfest and outside the event during the weekend of Oktoberfest. Weekends, I'm sorry about that.
So this is a public hearing.
Anybody like to be heard on it? Seeing none? Entertained motion?
I'll offer a motion to close the public hearing. And pass all objections where they present. Yeah, this is where it different. I'll offer a motion to close the public hearing and move forward on their request.
Second.
We got a motion and a second off resolution, waive the reading, closing the public hearing, and authorize noise variance.
And the dates for those are October 6, 7:30 to 11:30, the 7th from Florida, 11:30. Friday, October 13, from 7:30 to 11:30. And Saturday, October 14, from 4 to 11:30. We didn't hear anything in writing or any complaints from any neighbors?
No. No other questions, comments, finance director, please call and roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item two C, conduct a public hearing on a petition for improvements on the alley in block 185 north of Center Street.
Steve?
Mr. President, the city has received a petition for improvements on the alley in block 185 north of Center Street. Seventy-five point four percent of the adjacent property owners signed the petition. I have not received any written or verbal comments regarding this public hearing.
With that being said, they had seventy-five percent signing, I'll move off the resolution, waive the reading, find some contingency of petition, closing the public hearing, order the improvements and the preparation of plan and specs for the alley in block 185 north of Center Street.
I'll second that.
We got a motion and a second off resolution, waive the reading, any more discussion?
We went really quick, just want to make sure there's nobody in the audience that wants to be heard on that. Okay. I'll make sure.
No more comments, finance director, please call and roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item two D, conduct a public hearing to consider resolution approving with conditions the final plat of Milford Heights, second edition located in part of Lot 1, Block 2, 5th North Street, first edition.
Public hearing, anybody like to be heard? Nope, entertained a motion?
I'll offer a motion to close the public hearing off resolution, waive the reading, approving with conditions the final plat of Milford Heights, second edition located part of Lot 1, Block 2, 5th North Street, first edition.
Second. We got a motion and a second off resolution, and waive the reading, any more discussion?
So we include the conditions as well that are stated.
Correct. No more? Finance director, please call and roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item three A, consider motion approving the issuance of annual off sale intoxicating liquor license and transfer to annual on sale intoxicating on Sunday liquor license for 225 North Minnesota Street LLC.
I'll offer the motion.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Close no, motion carries. Item three B, consider a motion approving the issuance of a tobacco license and transfer to mechanical amusement devices for 25 North Minnesota LLC.
I'll offer the motion.
Second. That was 225, sorry. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor say aye.
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 Close no, motion carries. Item four A, from the Safety Commission recommend a modifications on on-street parking restrictions and signage on 6th North Street between Washington Street, Washington State Streets and Washington Street between 5th North and 7th Street. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Safety Commission considered a request from New Ulm Area Catholic Schools submitted by Shelley Bauer requesting some on-street parking modifications signage. Most of the requested items have to do with shifting around some existing parking conditions and the hope that they can get their buses and off-street parking to flow a little bit better. The Safety Commission recommended that the improvements or that the recommended or the requested modifications be approved. Ms. Bauer is here if you have any questions regarding her request.
Anybody got any questions? Are you picking it up?
He's fine.
Do we have any understanding of when these are going to be implemented?
Mr. President, if the city council passes this by resolution, the street department would start working on the modifications as soon as possible. We'll have to do some one calls and things like that before they put poles in the ground. I did discuss it with Mr. Curry from the Public Works Department and he had no issues with the request.
I'll offer the resolution to waive the reading and authorize the modifications.
I'll second.
We got a motion and a second off resolution, waive the reading, any more discussion? Seeing none, finance director, please call and roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item four B, number one, consider motion approving the task force order number 2015-1 for the Airport Engineering Services to meet and hunt professional services contract.
Steve?
Mr. President, this is a continuation of some item that was acted upon by the council at the previous council meeting where they approved the federal grant offer to fund this particular project. We've got a airport master plan that's forty-one years old that needs to be updated as well as the airport layup plan and a zoning update. We worked with the regional FAA office and the Mid-At Office of Aeronautics to develop this task order and it's been submitted by Meaden Hunt, just under 290,000. Between the state and federal government, they'll be paying about ninety-five percent of the cost. If you have any particular questions, I could attempt to answer it, it's rather lengthy document, but it has been reviewed by both those agencies and myself, as well as an outside consultant.
Just in reading the request, the cost to the city is about $24,000, so that's our five percent about.
Yes, Mr. President, it's a little bit confusing because the state and federal government will pay ninety-five percent of the cost of the master plan update and ALP update and the state will pay eighty percent of the zoning update, which is about, this is a small portion of that cost.
And according to your documents, this is in the 2018 budget request, so I'm assuming this bill will come out next year.
That is correct.
Okay. So with that, I'm going to offer the motion.
Second.
We need our airport.
We got a motion and a second, any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Close no, motion carries. Item four B, number two, consider resolution to establish a joint airport zoning board. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. President. After we've, after you have approved the zoning update and the grant to fund the zoning update will be shortly, we'll need to establish the joint airport zoning board, which consists of entities that the airport touches or may affect, which would be the city of New Ulm, Brown County and Milford Township. So it's kind of a lengthy process, there is kind of a outline of how to get there attached to your request for council action form. But I will be working with Meaden Hunt if it's approved and of course the city attorney to get through this process and we'll report back to you as we move along.
Thank you. Any questions, concerns?
On that, I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading, authorize the establishment of a joint airport zoning board to facilitate an airport zoning update.
Second.
We got a motion and a second off resolution, waive the reading, any more discussion? Seeing none, finance director, please call and roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item, item number five A, consider motion to reauthorize the negotiations with Farmers Co-op of Hanska and Claussen Plumbing and Heating for land acquisitions or easements for a non-motorized trail along the Minnesota River between Park Street and Third North Street.
Tom?
Thank you, President Schmitz and counselors, you have before you a request to reopen discussions with the Farmers Co-op of Hanska and Claussen Plumbing for a potential trail segment along the Minnesota River between Riverside Park and Minicon Park. You had authorized this in the past and also for an application for legacy grant and we were awarded that and created the design, but we weren't quite able to deliver that project before the state deadline, so we returned the hundred thousand dollar grant due to a lack of control over the land in question here. Owned by Claussen Plumbing and Farmers Co-op of Hanska, we weren't able to consummate an easement or purchase. And there's been some time between then and now and change in management and I think it's appropriate time to go back to the table and see if we can get an easement or acquire land for this trail segment.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions, concerns for Tom?
Just a comment that was unanimously, unanimously voted on to recommend the proposed action at the September 11th meeting for the park and rec.
Can we pull up some of the maps so we can let the public see what we're looking at? Is that possible?
Nope.
It's not possible.
They're in the packet, I don't know if.
It's in the packet for us, but not in the packet for the public.
Yeah, I don't know if New Cat can do that.
You can put it on, if you have it there, you can put it right there and it'll pull it up off of your screen, I believe, right? Is that right, Ron? You turn on your overhead, then you should be able to pull it up right here. Or maybe not. Can you turn on this camera, Ron? They had it on earlier.
This is coming off the ceiling?
Yep, comes right down on the ceiling, right onto what you're looking at. You put your paper there and, we're getting used to this new building, by the way, for the next six weeks. So thank you to our known public. There we go. Turn that.
Turn it to seventy.
Kind of show us what we're looking at.
More, more, almost there. Keep turning.
We should have a.
There you go.
Perfect.
All right. You can point right on your screen there.
Certainly, this is basically Center Street here, Center Street and Third North. Or point down here. Yeah, Center Street, Third North, this is the trail segment actually from Park Street. You can see the elevators. Hanska elevators and Claussen Plumbing right here.
So that's a strip we need to go negotiate?
Yes, because we own or have control over the other land.
How long is that approximately?
That would only be a couple of blocks.
Two blocks, okay.
Tom, is that considered a road currently?
No.
Or just a trail?
It's a cart path that was designated for, I think, unloading of boats and things of that nature way back when, but we don't have any legal right to that cart path, it still stays with the underlying property owner as the city attorney, back when we originally did this, had noted.
So it's a negotiation, the width of a car width or is it wider than, how much do we look at?
Typical trail right of way, I think it's about twelve feet, twelve to fifteen feet. You know, and that's just another segment of kind of a Minnesota River Parkway master plan concept. Other segments of trail would include through Riverside Park and then from Third North upriver into Minicon Park, coming out Minicon Drive, hooking into our existing trail system. Just another segment of a multi-segmented system.
So do we have a guest head on dollar amount this is going to potentially cost the city? Can we go forward on this?
No, that's why I am requesting authorization to get back to the table and talk with the two private landowners.
I guess we really, I mean, anything you lose is to reauthorize negotiations, come back, if they say no, drop. If they say yes, granted, probably come back, the council will put into the grant, whatnot, so. Motion to reauthorize negotiations with Farmers Co-op of Hanska and Claussen Plumbing and Heating for land acquisition or easements for a non-motorized trail along the Minnesota River between Park Street and Third North.
I'll second that.
I guess I have another question.
We got a motion and a second, any more discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I do have, I do have another question. The hundred thousand dollar legacy grant, so that was sent back. So did we reapply?
President Schmitz, Counselor Fisher, counselors, we have not reapplied for the grant and I will not recommend we do so until we have control of the land that we're desiring to put the trail upon.
This is step one.
Correct.
And then how much, is it a matching grant?
Yes, normally these park and trail legacy grants are a matching grant.
So now we'd be talking at least a hundred thousand dollars that the park and rec would have to match.
At this point, President Schmitz, we, you know, we have no idea on those details and, you know, we'll be having to relook at the scope of work, whether we're going to go just for this segment or.
I thought the last grant was a hundred thousand.
It was a hundred thousand dollar grant from the state and then our match was, I think, getting up into the seventy-five thousand dollar range as we got closer to potential construction. Construction estimates increased as that, as we got closer to that, but we never consummated land control for that segment of the trail. So the project was shelved. We had anticipated that that section would have to be built heavier, correct? Yes, yes, we have, correct. We have the design that we made back then and that segment was beefed up with the anticipation that the co-op might be bringing large trucks back there, you know, grain trucks. But at this point, we just want to get back to the table and have those discussions with those two private landowners to see what possibilities exist and then there will be other phases of going through park commission and council as far as design, scope of work, grant application and so on.
Well, I drove down there the other day, actually before I even noticed it was an agenda item and I drove behind there. I don't know, my opinion is, is, I'm always opinionated, I think it's a waste of money. I just, I cannot see a trail going behind it, there's nothing there, it's just a dirt trail. And Minicon, we haven't done nothing with Minicon, it's going to, you know, and you're tying Riverside Park up to something that's nothing yet. So why do we want to spend all that money? You know, it just, to me, it don't make sense. We have other things that we should be spending money out of the parks department besides the trail down there. I was just at a meeting where you were the other day, we're sitting down there with a building that we don't even heat in the winter because we're worried about money. I mean, we're only talking a thousand dollars and here we want to spend a hundred thousand dollars? Sorry, we don't have sidewalks down there, wherever place else in town we have sidewalks. Why don't we get Riverside Park to where it should be before we spend money tying things together to nowhere?
President Schmitz, we have many elements of park development, proposed park development at Riverside Park and Minicon Park. You know, recently, we were able to complete the replacement and upgrade of the water access site at Minicon with a quarter million dollar grant from the state of Minnesota. And there's many different elements, I'm happy to sit down with you and go over these different aspects of improvement at Riverside Park and Minicon Park.
I agree, the river access, that, that makes sense, but to me, some of this doesn't make sense. I mean, that, that's for activity throughout the river, there's nothing but a mosquito head back to it, it's really, I don't see a future in the river. I mean, if you want to leave something grow wild, that would be a good spot to start. It is.
Isn't there a hope at some point to connect this trail with other trails as well through the city?
Yes, it's a segment of our existing trail and potential future trails.
They all connecting in the next.
Yes, including, you know, potentially the putting green site at 20th South, the former putting green site with Front Street on top of our, the city-owned berm would be another segment of scenic trail along our mighty Minnesota River.
So we're going to build a non-motorized trail, beef it up so they can drive semis on it?
Those details have not been worked out yet. And.
We know it's going to come. Detail, whatever.
Tom, do we have any concerns about the flooding over here? In regards to that or are you going to raise it?
Water levels raise and they reset, you know, rescind. Bolton, make the engineers that prepared the plan, they were confident that it's parallel with the flow of the river and that this trail segment would not be washed out because of that.
Similarly, you know, the water access site, the parking lot, lower parking lot at Minicon Park has been underwater numerous times with no known damage to it, so you can design, build, anything to withstand and, you know, if, being that this proposed trail segment is parallel with the flow of the river, that's a big plus from an engineering standpoint. But it will flood. Oh, yes, absolutely, that's kind of, just like the lower parking lot, the water access site at Minicon. The lower grass area of Riverside Park floods.
So why you want to build that trail that kitty corners cockeyed down through the park? Why don't you just go straight down around the river there to it?
The Riverside Park proposed trail would be up out of the high watermark, it would be kind of mid-shelf was the design that we created a few years back.
Put this in the water?
Pardon?
We're putting this in the water now.
Yeah, because we don't want to go through the elevators, you know, or up along Front Street. We like to provide scenic enjoyment of the nature and the Minnesota River.
Amblerica scenic. My sense word, whatever.
Anybody else comment?
Is there other places where you, where there's other trails in the future plan that might benefit more than putting our money in a trail that might be flooded part of the year? You know, is there other expansions other than this area?
Well, other than this segment from, you know, Third North to Park Street, we have a proposed, well, we actually have a design through Riverside Park from Center Street to, actually Park Street to Third South. And now there's been discussions with the Minnesota River Group about an interest in a trail on the south terminus of Front Street down to 20th South on top of the berm and that's designed not to flood. So there's just a number of just segment ideas that could take decades to complete, completely build out a system. But this is an opportunity to further enjoy the Minnesota River and its, you know, scenic values.
And I get that, I, I think people would enjoy riding along the river rather than on a, you know, through any industrial area or whatever. I just worry about the flooding and the access to that.
Presently, people are using that corridor and traversing that corridor, you know, on a regular basis. Granted, they're trespassing on the private property segment, but I, every time I go down there, I see people down there fishing, angling, skipping stones. Parents, children, grandparents, multi-generational experience, you know, on the river. Not everyone has a boat, a lot of people like to shorefish and enjoy the scenery along the shoreline.
One other comment, you just hit an item that is not a part of this, but just before we do anything with the berms, researched prior council meetings, I almost could swear in building at the berms that we said never would have trails on top of a berm in anybody's backyard.
We sure had discussions, I can't remember if we voted about that.
I know we discussed.
I've done.
We discussed.
I just.
I've done some research and.
Where's Dennis when you need him?
We, we own that southern portion of the berm.
We might own it, but we, I, I think, I'll be right from right now, I will not support it. I don't think we should be doing that in anybody's backyard. Sorry.
There was discussion about not putting it on the land, we just had easements for the berm on because those individuals own their property and they weren't going to give us easement if we allowed that. But on our, the own section, we had always talked about, you know, with the city council and with staff, that that could be utilized by the city for any purposes. The, I think the problem is, I think, Mr. Kaler would say that, you know, we don't want vehicles, you know, running up there unless they're for the, for the maintenance vehicles and stuff like that, but walkers and bicyclists would be a problem, I mean, from the berm perspective. Maybe it's a problem for the people that live on Front Street and and then have traffic back there, but it's actually past their backyard, across the alley and across the city-owned property, so it's actually quite a ways away from the house. But that's a decision for the council, whether they want to allow that or not. It's not staff's decision, that's your decision.
Well, that's not the action in front of us right now.
Right, exactly.
So we should move on, we got a long night.
Any more discussion on five A? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Close no. Finance director, call and roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Nope, motion carries. Item number five B, number one and two, consider ordinance amending section 9.04 of City Code, City of New Ulm, relative to zoning of said city. Second rate of ordinance number 17-016, fifth series, and a motion to adopt ordinance number 17-016, fifth series.
Roger?
I'll offer a motion to waive the second reading of this ordinance because we have a really long one coming up and I'll include the motion to adopt this ordinance 17-016, fifth series.
Second.
We just had to do some zoning.
We got a motion and a second, any more discussion?
We got a motion in the second. Any more discussion? See you none? On favor say aye.
Aye.
Both? No. Motion carries. Item five C, number one and two. Consider an ordinance amending section nine point oh four of the city code, city of New Ulm relative to zoning of said city. Second reading ordinance number seventeen dash zero one seven, fifth series, and a motion to adopt ordinance number seventeen dash zero one seven, fifth series.
I'll be nice again and offer a motion to waive the second reading of this ordinance and to offer a motion to adopt seventeen dash zero one seven, fifth series again has to do with some zoning issues in our city. Unless somebody really wants me to read it or Roger read it.
No hands up.
No hands went up.
We got a motion in the second. Any more discussion? See you none? On favor say aye.
Aye.
Both? No. Motion carries. Item number five D, consider resolution.
Is that a resolution?
What?
Yep, that was a resolution. Yep.
No, it was a.
No.
No, it's a.
So offering a resolution, alright.
Five.
Where are you at here?
You need the resolution?
Five one.
That was five, five C.
Five one.
Yeah, I really think when we're amending, um, or enacting an ordinance, I think it'd be appropriate to do it by resolutions.
Both of them? He adds C or just C?
Both kinda disagree.
Yeah, I know, did we, was the last one, was that a motion as well?
It was a motion, yep. We can do them both.
Alright, if you wanted, I would suggest you do it by resolution.
If you wanna do this one first.
Let's do five B. We'll go back.
Alright, then I'll just offer mine as a resolution versus a motion.
Second.
We got a motion in the second off resolution. Waive reading. Any more discussion? See you none? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Council Fisher?
Yes.
Council Mack?
Yes.
Council Schultz?
Yes.
Council Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item five C, also a resolution.
I'll offer a resolution again to, so the motion basically saying the same thing.
Second.
We got a motion in the second off resolution. Waive reading. Any more discussion? See you none? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Council Fisher?
Yes.
Council Mack?
Yes.
Council Schultz?
Yes.
Council Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item five D, consider resolution approving the first amendment of the post-closing recommendation for the access agreement with the Minnesota Strasse LLC for the property located at one oh three and one twenty-three South Minnesota Street. Remember.
Mister President, I think, uh, just for information, the agreement that you have in the council packet uh, has been amended. You have an additional on your uh, laptop, additional icon on the front that you can click on which shows the red line version. So if you just minimize, hit the little dash mark, you'll come up. And you'll see the uh, you'll see the one that has red marked, yeah, red ink on it. And that's the updated one. So you can see all the changes that have been made to it. They're, they're not, as I understand it, the city attorney will probably explain to you that they're more minor, doesn't change the substance, but.
Mister President, that's correct. Um, I can also advise the council that, uh, I've received communication, uh, Snowbrick and I today from the attorney representing the developer, they've accepted the terms of the agreement with the revisions that we put in. Uh, we also got input from our consultant, Brown InterTech. And what this is doing, I think primarily considering the amount of time that's elapsed from when the first agreement was signed um, until today, it sounds like the developer is actually gonna move forward with this project. And we needed to finalize this to confirm what the, how the costs would be allocated between the developer and the city. This was some land that the developer acquired. There were some issues with respect to remediating some hazardous waste. And as part of the terms, when that was acquired, the city agreed to part, cover part of that cost. So we have two agreements, one just dealing with the fact that it's gotta get cleaned up, the second that dealt with how the cost was gonna be handled. And at the developer's request, they wanna just consolidate them into one agreement, which is what this does. That's the purpose of it.
Any more discussion?
Well, with no more discussion, I'll offer a resolution, waive reading, approving the first amendment to the post-closing remediation of access agreement with Minnesota Strasse LLC for the property located at one oh three to one twenty-three South Minnesota Street.
Second. We got a motion in the second off resolution. Waive reading. Any more discussion?
Mister President, I, I just point out that the very first paragraph on page two should be paragraph G, as it follows paragraph E and F from the preceding page.
Okay.
Do you type all?
E, G.
Any more discussion? See you none? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Council Fisher?
Yes.
Council Mack?
Yes.
Council Schultz?
Yes.
Council Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item six A, consider resolution approving the development agreement with S and P Development LLC for the property to be planted as the Milford Heights second edition.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading.
Second.
We got a motion in the second off resolution. Waive reading. Any more discussion?
I think we've talked this to death.
Finance Director, please call a roll.
Council Fisher?
Yes.
Council Mack?
Yes.
Council Schultz?
Yes.
Council Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item six B, consider motion to fund a historical video, video for the New Ulm Fire Department as well as startup fund for logo items for the upcoming one hundred and fiftieth anniversary celebration in two thousand twenty.
I think we should hear about this.
Who would like to speak?
You knew that was coming, right?
Thank you, President Schmitz and council members. Uh, yes, we are seeking a startup fund for our celebration coming up in two thousand twenty. Uh, the reason we are asking so early is, um, as you know, uh, Flying Buttrus, they're wanting to start the creation of the video fairly early. Um, as well as some of the items that we would like to have, um, our logo on. Um, we're looking at some commemorative steins and, uh, working with someone in New Ulm. It takes about a year and a half for her to complete those, so, um, part of that is the reason we're asking two years in advance.
Do they have any questions?
So these items are gonna be sold to the public?
Yes.
In advance of the?
In advance and throughout the year of two thousand twenty, yes.
So the budget you're asking for is that, I mean, how do you plan to break up that fifteen thousand?
Um, those were in the attachments. We have, um, a logo that we need to have created. We have, um, prices for commemorative steins. We were looking at, um, glassware, um, and then also, um, Flying Buttrus doing a commemorative video.
That video is also gonna be used for.
Yes.
Hiring.
Yes. The video, um, we're hoping to create a timeless piece that will not only celebrate one hundred and fifty years for the New Ulm Fire Department, but also be used in the future for recruitment, um, going forward.
And I see we must have a recruitment issue because there's been some ads in the paper.
Yes, we are looking for volunteers right, as we speak.
How many are you looking for?
As many as we can get.
It's not an answer. We'll plug time.
Question, um, on the revenue then, taken in on these items, will that go back into what fund?
Cause.
Probably go back into the general fund of the fire department.
So do you think, do we think we can offset that fifteen thousand?
That's our goal.
The goal? How good a goal?
I'm confident.
One comment I have to make, I do remember twenty-five years ago, the past council, we did something similar, asked for upfront cost when we did a hundred and twenty-fifth. And.
Correct.
We didn't have any complaints from the council. It went over pretty good. That was similar then, twenty-five years ago.
So then you would support it?
Well, I think they got two years to get this rocking and rolling. I, I feel real good about this. I'm gonna offer the motion.
I'll second that.
We got a motion in the second. Any more discussion?
I just, going through the items that you have planned, um, I think you've got a good start and it sounds like it's gonna be a lot of fun.
Thank you.
So at some point, we'd like you to come back and talk more about what's coming and get some good publicity for your programs and projects.
Certainly. Thank you.
Any more discussion? See you none? On favor say aye.
Aye.
Both? No. Motion carries. Item six C, consider resolution accepting the preliminary, uh, yeah, two thousand eighteen budget for the city of New Ulm and establishing maximum property tax levy for the two thousand eighteen and set a public date to consider the two thousand eighteen budget. Nicole, short and sweet.
Mister President, councilors, citizens, this budget here is, is, or the presentation I have here is, is fairly high level. It doesn't get down to the details and all the departments. But if you have questions as I go or as we start discussions, feel free to ask. This budget assumes just a few changes in two thousand seventeen from what we've been doing in two thousand sixteen and I'll highlight those within the presentation. The preliminary levy amount has to be set by October second, so hopefully we'll come out tonight with that direction and then once that is set, we'll only be able to lower that come the final budget in December, so. And some of these slides are a little different than what was sent out because I received some additional information after this was published, so I'll explain that as we go here.
So this is the most update, updated?
Yes. So starting with the revenue, local government aid, of course, is one of our largest revenues and one of our biggest supports. There is actually a fifteen thousand, almost sixty thousand dollar increase in that, in the local government aid this year. Brings it up to four point three million. And then I just added a little bit of extra history there so you can see where that's been since two thousand seven. Overall, the expenses did decrease, four point four million in this budget over last year's budget. Basic, uh, or in two thousand seventeen, we budgeted a large amount for land purchases, um, security upgrades, phone system upgrades, some different things. Those were all budgeted to use fund balance. So the decrease in expenses doesn't translate into a decrease in the levy. But there was a decrease of about eighteen point eight percent. And then in two thousand sixteen, there was a spike too, and that was also a large use of fund balance. Um, and also that was used to pay off, um, some debt early, the two thousand eight, seven, eight, ten, um, bonds were all paid off early as well as the fire truck was purchased that year. So there was a spike in the expenses for sixteen. Okay, some of the biggest highlights are the increases that really impacted the, the levy that we've come up with is health insurance. There is a twelve percent increase in our health insurance premiums this year, which translates into about a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. Now, part of that increase is due to additional staff being added. That would be the assistant city manager, um, another investigator at the PD and I thought there's another part-time position, but that would reflect the health insurance. Over, overall, the personnel services did increase about almost five hundred thousand dollars or five point five six percent. That includes a two and a half percent wage increase for, across the board, um, those additional employees that were mentioned. An increase in the health insurance and then that related taxes and, and other benefits that go with the salary. There is an increase of about twenty point eight percent in the IT support. And this, um, as was explained to me, relates mostly to cybersecurity. The needs to increase of the needs for additional support to make sure we're getting what we need out of what we have. I'm sure you all see the news every day and understand why we would need cybersecurity increases.
Nicole, before you move on, on the health insurance, I think we're probably gonna pick a different slide. Are we continuing to look at, um, different plans for different employees and, you know, some, some employees want one of the lowest prices possible, they're deductible, some want the opposite. Are we offering a wide variety? Remind me what we're offering for plans?
We are adding this year the, um, an HSA option. Um, so employee will maintain the plans that we have in place and then add the HSA option for employees that do that. It doesn't change our premiums and doesn't change what goes into that expense. It just creates more benefits or more options for the employees. If we had taken a higher increase than that, we more than likely would have gone out for bids for other plans and other companies. We were comfortable with this budgeted increase, um, like I said.
How often do we go out for bids?
Only as needed. It would depend on the market, on the premium increases and.
So if it was a twenty percent increase, or for example, we would go out for a bid.
Yeah, and we've been with the service co-op for, three years? Three years now? So we, we're, you know, we don't wanna jump ship and, and, uh, change plans. Often that doesn't play well for us when we do go out, so that played into the decision this way, this year as well.
But I do know once every three years or so you do go out for bids, sometimes you can get these current companies to drop price because they don't wanna lose you either, so.
Right, there's been a lot of negotiation to get it to the twelve percent. Uh, they actually had it higher and, uh, we had plugged in twelve percent in anticipation and that's where we got it negotiated down to. The, uh, if you remember last year, it was supposed to be like forty-six percent and we got it knocked down to twenty-six percent.
Right.
Okay? So they did a really nice thing for us last year by reducing, because we did warrant a forty-six percent increase. So we felt that, uh, the, the twelve, based on other communities that are getting the same kind of bounce, was kind of a realistic number. The calculation for the, the current program render, they go back twenty-four months, which includes bad experience and some recent good experience. We probably could've went out on the market and just went to the last twelve months, looked at that, and then, and it'd been a very favorable experience. But our third-party administrator and staff felt that, uh, jumping because of that wasn't probably in our best interest, so we decided, let's go this year and if we see something different next year, you know, it goes rough a lot, then we'll likely go out, uh, go out on the market and see if there's something out there that, uh, won't increase as high, but. So all of those considerations were made and, uh.
Yeah, twelve percent's really, I hate to say twelve percent's not bad, because probably twenty years ago, they've been all over it, but it's not bad.
Well, there, uh, there are some people that we've, uh, that have gone out and said, you know, they're looking at sixty, seventy percent increases this year, so we felt twelve wasn't too bad.
Right. Alright, thank you.
And then the last added ex, or national class added expense, but large one that was added was the addition of public safety lighting. About three hundred and four thousand, three hundred and five thousand. This is an expense that the PUC has taken, took on when, when government aid was cut and they're asking us to take it back. So this expense will actually have an offsetting revenue bill. There, there's gonna be a fee added to the utility bills. Will be a, a reduction in their meter fee and then another fee added to the bills that will be designated specifically for this public safety lighting and the revenue will directly offset the expense. So there's no tax increase related to the, to the lighting. And then looking at the levy, so right now, as the levy sits, I, um, I know when it was sent out, we were at four and a quarter. With the extra information I received, we're actually up to an increase of about three hundred and seventy-five thousand or five point two eight percent. Even though the debt service levy has actually gone down a couple hundred thousand dollars since last year due to those, some of those early payouts that we did in sixteen. And I will, uh.
Go ahead.
Do you wanna? I'll, uh, touch on that, what that extra percent was that was added as we go here.
Could you go back, uh, to the public safety lighting? I just wanna note for the city council that this is actually a city fee that will be found on the utility bill. Alright, so it's not a PUC fee. It's, uh, it's kinda, it's, it's kinda like your, your property taxes, you get to recycling, is on that property tax. You gotta pay it for it somehow and they figured accounting property tax would be the way to go with that. This will help reduce the rate, uh, that the PUC people will actually see. It'll show up on the bill as a, as a fee that's in essence is gonna go to the city. And we in turn then will pay for our electric usage. Most cities pay for their own electric usage, like all Excel customers, you know, the cities, they pay for their electric. It was in eighty, uh, no, yeah, two thousand two, two thousand three, when local government aid got cut so drastically that the PUC helped us out so we wouldn't have to, you know, cut services, uh, so dramatic. And now that we're kinda back on the, you know, even keel, uh, they've asked us to look at this and we said, well, it makes sense. But taking three hundred thousand dollars, uh, and putting it on the taxes, you know, you're sitting here talking about, uh, four percent, is that what it was? Four times, it'd be two hundred and eighty thousand, so. Four times, it'd be two hundred and eighty thousand, so you're talking about a four percent increase in property taxes. And so we figured out that if we can keep the property taxes down, just get the fee, and we'll work it accounting-wise so that everything works out. But it's the city's fee that's on that bill, much like the water and sewer, water main and sewer main fee that's on there. They collect it and they give it to the city. It's at, is that that three fifty or three seventy-five number, Steve, do you remember?
I believe it's three, going to be three seventy-five per meter, sewer and water.
Yeah, yeah, each, so it's not, nothing new, but it, I just want to make sure everybody's understanding that, that this is what this number's all about.
So I know we have more discussion coming, but could we do half this year, half next year, or half eighteen, half nineteen? Is that an option? I don't know if we need it, but I just want to throw it in.
We, we, we were talking about that process, if it was going to be put on the taxes.
Right.
You know, to ramp it up, what's not going on the taxes, it's just going to be a fee on utility bill.
Well, to a lot of people, that's a tax.
Yeah, it's a kind of a hidden tax.
Yeah.
Either way, you're paying it.
Right.
It will be an exchange, is actually what it's going to be, because it'll come off of their electric.
Partially, yeah, there, there is currently a two dollar meter charge in your electric base cost. That two dollars will be pulled out and taken away, and then this three fifty. So it's an additional, additional dollar fifty.
We can keep going through this, but potentially that's an option.
You know, if you look at it from a use perspective, use, U S E, you know, the corporations in town pay much larger taxes than, let's say, a residential house. Do they get the ben, you know, do they actually get the benefit of the streetlights? To the value of the taxes they pay based on their, value of their property, probably not, their employees do, you know. So the streetlights really are a public safety thing for the residents. And so we thought, this is actually a more fair process. Some of the industries have, you know, eight, nine meters, and they're going to pay eight, nine times that fee. But a resident is going to just pay that, that one fee, and they get the value of having streetlights in the entire community for three dollars and fifty cents. You know, we could put it on taxes, but then, you know, the industry picks up that cost. And we've heard, I think, in the past that, you know, industry feels a little overburdened with their taxes the way it is. This is one way of maybe making that issue more palatable. But that's up to you to decide if you want to help continue to do that. Or you could put it on taxes instead of putting it on as a fee.
So, we covered this one. Do we want, did I cover everything? So it's about a five and a, five and a quarter percent le, increase in the levy, which actually, right now, there's an estimated three percent increase in the tax capacity. So a five percent, five and a quarter percent increase in the levy has about a one and a half percent impact on the tax rate. Now, these items here that will start this list of things that are currently in the budget and included in the tax levy, obviously, you would have the option to pull any of those out at one point, but I wanted to highlight what those changes were that are creating a levy increase. So the first one is that replacing a couple of exterior doors at the city hall costs about fifteen thousand, or has about a point two percent increase or impact on the tax increase. Then adding the assistant city manager has about a hundred and ten thousand dollar impact. And would be, the assistant city manager will be, is twenty percent funded by the PUC. And then with that fifty thousand dollar change with the EDC contribution not being there anymore would contribute to, or has helped with part of that. The, uh, human rights commission has asked for a thirty-two hundred dollar increase, that's less than a half a percent impact. Adding the additional police investigator adds about ninety-four thousand dollars to the levy, or one point three percent. And then, I probably, let me do the next one first. There's a, been a staffing request, requested, or staffing change request for the fire department. It would be taking an employ, a full-time employee that's currently split between the fire and, and the police department, and moving them completely to the fire department. And so then, the police anticipate possibly needing another part-time administrative personnel. So between the two, it's nineteen thousand for the part-time, and then it adds another forty-three thousand dollars roughly to the fire department. And then on to some of the park and rec projects that are in there. Currently, we have a lighting in there for Harmon Park, and this is for the volleyball in the ice rink area. That's about fifty thousand dollars. Two hundred thousand dollars is currently budgeted for the Harmon Heights retaining wall. And I'm sure Tom could explain what those plans would be more than I could. And then some changes at Mueller, there's a few changes at Mueller Park, so there's this right field bullpen, turf to mound, about ninety-six hundred dollars. Left field walkway, about twenty-one thousand dollars, and the left field bullpen and retaining wall, about thirty thousand dollars. And then at North Park, there's a couple of projects, there's sixty-four thousand budgeted for dugouts and backstops, and seventy-five hundred for a North Park stormwater inlet. And then continuing the, figuring replacement of channel is another forty thousand dollars, and that's been ongoing for the last few years. And then a new, for the parks department, a new trailer, about eighty-two hundred dollars, and another enclosed trailer, I believe they were going to use for programs, about twenty-five thousand dollars. And I think this is the last page of them. But the, a new floor scrubber bogle of thirty-one thousand, another floor scrubber, civic center of six thousand. Twenty-five thousand dollars is budgeted for a master plan at the parks. And then another twenty thousand is budgeted for tree replacement within the parks and trail system. Now, this is where the next items are, where the, the additional quarter percent came from. And I'm not entirely sure, Steve might have to explain what this is for. But with Fender Park, there was a hundred and sixty-four thousand that came in. Right now, we have budgeted to use eighteen thousand out of the general fund balance to cover a portion of that, and then seventy-three thousand dollars of Parkland dedication fund. So the actual levy impact is seventy-three thousand, or about one percent. So that covers the things that are in the budget. Now, these are some additional things that were in the original department request budgets, but I pulled out. And then, the decisions can be made at this point, what to do with those items. Starting with the retail and economic development contribution of thirty-five thousand. Syncing funds for the fire truck replacement, and this is something we'd like to contribute to every year so that the funds are there as, as replacements and trucks need to be done. That's about two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. And then also the syncing fund for the city facilities of about four hundred and fifty-five thousand. There was a project to replace a controller in the blockage field for fifty thousand. Additional lighting in Harmon Park on Field One of two hundred thousand. New splash pad for the, for the park system of two hundred and five thousand. Replacing the, the rest of the flooring that's not being done this year in city hall of about a hundred and twenty-six thousand. And then, city hall lighting project, I know there was one budgeted this year, but I think it's been changed, and this would be, whatever that project has changed into, I guess, about forty thousand. So that is what I have.
Anybody have any questions, Carolyn? I guess I'll make one. I guess, I don't know. In the past, we've always, we'll pick on the fire department and the city facilities, we always put money aside in the sinking fund. Why do we pull it out this time? Just so we can talk about it?
Because of where we were with the tax levy increase. So, the original department requested budget, as it stood with all of those items in there, was about twenty-nine percent, or over twenty-nine percent. So, we went back and we started pulling things out just to get down to a more acceptable levy increase. And I, I think, except to council, you know, if there's things that are in there that they want to pull out, or things that they think are more important that need to be added back in, or if they want that levy increase to be higher, that's kind of where we, where I've gone with this, at this point. In relation to the syncing funds, I wanted to update you on where things were, so it would help with that decision. As far as the fire truck replacement fund is concerned, right now, there's a current balance just under a million and a half, with another two hundred and forty-five thousand going in there for the twenty seventeen budget. I'm looking at their future projects, there's nothing budgeted in eighteen, no use, no use budgeted. Engine ten has to be replaced in twenty twenty, that's about six hundred thousand. Some bunker gear needs to be replaced in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, somewhere in that area, about a hundred and fifty thousand. And then engine thirty-one would be the next big one, and about twenty thirty-one, that's a million dollars. So that, those projects total just over two million, and right now, we have one point five million in there. And then as far as the city facility, city facilities go, we currently, after this use contribution, will have about two point two million in there. Through twenty twenty, the projects that I could tell that needed to be done, and these are my rough numbers from the spreadsheet that Reg had developed, in twenty nineteen, there's a fire station roof of about three hundred thousand, library roof of about three hundred thousand. And then in twenty twenty, the fire station HVAC, which is about forty. And then the city hall ballast in twenty twenty-one, the library structural repairs of about a hundred thousand in twenty twenty-two, and the community center ballast of a hundred and ten thousand in twenty twenty. So those total about nine hundred and fifty thousand. And as I said, at the end of this year, we'll have about two point two million in there. So I don't know if those numbers help decide.
Have we got any big ticket items coming up in the next ten years that we're, we're, I mean?
Couple of roofs and stuff, these were the only projects I was aware of on the schedule that we had within our sheet that tells us what we should be putting away. So, twenty nineteen, where those two roofs, that total about six hundred thousand. Those, that was the next year that anything, from there, from my perspective on that sheet, looked like it needed to be done.
As long as Paul's here, with the fire department, by not putting anything in that's going to have a major impact on you? I mean, we can't continuously not put in, so I guess I would sooner see something go in now, I don't care how small it is, and keep it up rather than cut gold turkey.
President Schmitz and the city council, she has a sheet that we went through, and I think we have, what, a five percent increase built into that. Two thousand nineteen, I think, is when, not twenty, but nineteen is when we're scheduled for the next big purchase.
We talked about ordering it in nineteen, and then it would be here in twenty twenty.
Well, it'll be thirty years, the truck will be thirty years old in nineteen, so we're talking about maybe starting spec work, maybe by the end of this year, the beginning of next year, because you're looking at probably a year and a half project. After that, I think the next big one is the, is it the rescue, or is it thirty-one?
Well, the truck ninety in twenty twenty-seven.
Yeah, that would be the rescue truck. You know, I haven't, haven't looked at what, what those are running. You know, I, these things really increase quite a bit. I think we, we looked at what the next aerial truck was going to cost. We paid eight hundred and sixty-two thousand for this one, and I think we figured it's going to be close to two million. So, you know, anything, you know, that we can contribute to that fund, I think we want to keep it going. Yeah, you know, you know, whether it has to be that much, I'm not quite sure, but, you know, I, I would like to continue that to make sure that these vehicles are, are getting updated when they should. The, there are other items in, in that, in that fund as well, the, the big ticket items. We, we purchase our turnout gear all at one time. NFPA has standards on how many hours that these things are supposed to be used and should get rid of. And our calculation is just a little over eight years, so we try to replace ours every eight years. As you know, we just replaced all the SCBA's. They're good for fifteen years now, the last time, I think, they were only ten, so we've built that in as well. So there, there's, there's quite a few, or there's other things in there besides just the trucks.
Mr. President, you know, the, both park and rec and fire department, and in essence, all the departments are contributing like to the facility funds to replace their roofs and things like that. But at the same time, if something catastrophic were to happen, we would, and we didn't have enough money in that fund to deal with it. We would, you know, we would look at our backup system, which is the general fund reserve balance, which is sitting at five point five million dollars and is fifty-nine percent. You know, we need to be thirty-five to fifty percent, according to the state auditor. So, when things come up, this isn't the only fund that you can use money on, if you can access the general fund as a backup. So, you know, if the, if the money isn't in that fund, you have money.
You can have any in general fund if we don't start keeping up.
No, I'm not saying we don't, I'm just saying, whenever, you know, there's a backup system for the fire department, there's a backup system for the park and rec, and if something catastrophic happens, if they don't have enough money in that fund, we do have the general fund, and we can probably spend down two million dollars out of that, then we still would be okay with the state at thirty-five percent of fund balance. So, you know, and then we, we work at building a backup, you know, through time like we did.
But if we do a little bit, I, I guess, I'm leaning towards, is we do at least something, just don't take it all out, that, because someday it's going to bite us.
I mean, I'm okay with that. But we were, you know, the council president gave myself a kind of directive, five percent. It's, it's not bringing in another twenty. So now, the hard part is yours to decide what you want to remove and what you want to add back in.
Now you did what I said, now I'm changing.
I was trying to please.
Charlie, I know last year, we kind of walked through the, each individual item, and could we maybe?
We can.
Go back to slide number three, which talks about items being included in the budget and levy.
This slide will come up again, correct? That's why I didn't have it on.
Now it's on, Dave.
That one, yeah. No, that was the right one. So if we walk our way through this particular slide, we can't really do a lot, we have security issues, so the first one, we've kind of decided on. We voted last council meeting to do item number two.
I have a question on number two before we move on. The cost that you have there, can you explain that again? The hundred and ten thousand, what that all includes and what?
That is salary and benefits and taxes.
Benefits, and you said it's part of this paid by the PUC, or?
Part of the hundred and ten would be covered, would come back as revenue from the PUC. So twenty percent of that would be covered by PUC.
Okay. Now, for economic development, the PUC was supporting the Economic Development Corporation for, when they were contributing, what, fifty thousand? Being this is going to be that new economic development position, would they not help fund that position?
It would depend on what the system, or what the job descriptions of the, I mean, that's kind of how we decided what portions of which jobs the PUC helps fund.
We could, we could set it up that way, yes. It, this, the eighty-twenty was what was here six years ago, and so that's what was inserted in until we make a change.
So that mon, number might change in our development?
Well, the number stays the same, it's just who's going to pay what would change.
Just the revenue.
The revenue would help decrease the levy that would be, if there was additional revenue coming from the PUC.
So if they provided additional thirty thousand, that'd be a half a percent would drop on the tax levy.
This is the total number on the expense side, regardless of what they want.
The increase would come on the revenue side.
Couldn't we take the, like, the fifteen thousand on the exterior doors, could that come out of that facilities?
I think it could, yeah. So we could use fund balance for that, or not fund, but that fund balance, not the general fund balance, but.
If you're going to keep track of these little notes as we move through these.
We're on video.
The increase, because I know we, last year, we kind of had some fuzzy math there. Increase to Human Rights Commission, though, my understanding is because they want to do more promotional, human rights events in the next year. They asked for thirty-two hundred is, is.
That was their increase.
An increase in that.
Yep, so they're asking for a total of seventy-one hundred, I believe.
I guess I haven't seen the specifics for what they're asking for, but we could have, a lot of departments ask for a lot of different things, it doesn't matter if we have to, we're going to fund it, correct? So I, some we certainly couldn't. I mean, is this such a? So I, some we certainly couldn't, I mean, it's such a small, minor amount, but still, it's an amount. I'd like to know more about the police investigator position and the part-time administrative assistant, I, I know our, some activity increases in that area, but I'd like to know more maybe from our chief on what, what's the plan there, and, and does it have to be a new position, could it be somebody internally? Do we know if this is a long-term trend, or if it's just a, a blip on, on police activity?
Yeah, we had asked, uh, uh, Chief Whelan to provide, uh, the justification, and, uh, so we included it in the budget, and he's, uh, currently working on that as I speak, well, maybe not right this moment, but he's working on it. Uh, so that'll come before the City Council, it'll go to personnel first, because it's in addition to the current staffing level. So as soon as we get that justification, then we'll carry it forward, as well as the police part-time and the Fire Department staffing. You know, the justification will be brought to personnel first and then City Council for.
So I don't know if I'm a fan to have it included in our budget, because I mean, we've already approved it, so I would recommend we take that out for now.
Well, you think we have to have it in because of the tax levy?
You won't be able to put it back in later.
You can't put, we'll have it in.
Well, we, we can't put the money back in, we can decide what we do with the money, if we did, decide to do something different.
Right, you could, you could rearrange things later and keep it in there, but something else would have to come out at that point, right.
Or it would fall for reserve.
And the personnel hasn't made a recommendation to the council on this either yet.
That's why I don't think it should be, right, not yet, I mean, maybe next year.
It almost should be on that second list, rather than in the budget list.
Yeah, I agree.
It should be on the second list.
Well, the, not the included, the ones under consideration.
Well, the ones that are included are also under consideration.
But approving it today means we're basically approving it, and I'm, I'm not there yet, I, I've not heard of the documentation.
No, what you're approving is the dollar amount, if you decide to not do the police investigator, but you wanna put more playground in for ninety-four thousand dollars, now you can change that because you've got the ninety-four thousand dollars, if you remove it from the budget, the preliminary budget, and then when you finalize a budget in December, and you say, okay, we're not gonna do the police investigator, it's out, but we wanna do the playground, you don't have the ninety-four thousand dollars.
So really, what we wanna do is set the levy.
That's all we're doing.
You're just setting that if we don't wanna go over five percent, we, you know, that's the budget, you know, then.
But we can talk about it if we do wanna throw something out, we have the right to do it, but just we need to make sure we got the right dollar value for the levy.
This was, you know, the process that we've used in past years was, we would come in high, you know, twenty percent high, everybody get excited, and then we say, well, what do you wanna do on this issue, what do you wanna do on this issue, and we say, we don't wanna do that, so we take it out, and we end up getting an eight percent increase instead of twenty. So this time, we start with a five percent, and then say, what do you wanna add in, or what do you wanna take out? But the goal is to try and keep it at, you know, five percent, which is, you know, acceptable, if you wanna raise it to twelve percent by adding things in, that's your, that's your discretion, you know?
We just took it away from you and gave it to us.
Yes. And, and, you know, so, this, this act that you would do today, this vote, sets the maximum tax levy, but between now and December twenty, twenty-ninth, or whenever we gotta get the, the levy in the second meeting in December, you can mold this amount of money into anything you want to, to do, you just can't raise it. Now, you can raise the actual budget, you can spend more money, but you'd have to take it out of, uh, general fund balance.
But if we have some things at this point that none of us are really supportive of, it could be taken out, it should be taken out.
Should be.
I guess I kinda still have a question about the Fire Department staffing, you know, so we went from having a part-time fire chief to a full-time chief, and a part-time, secretary, now to full-time, so, and my understanding when we hired the chief, that he's taking some on of inspections as far as the rental and on that aspect. If now we need more staffing, could we be taking that from the engineering or from the inspections office in regards to cover that? I don't know, you know, you know what I'm saying, you know, with?
Yeah, basically what you have is a, a half-time, uh, clerical at the Police Department and a half-time at the Fire Department, right? The, the full-time plea, uh, fire chief now is taking over much more, uh, activity from the police pers- or from the Fire Department perspective, as far as the, uh, rental inspections and things of that nature. Uh, as you might imagine, that if the police chief is doing more, there's likely gonna be more paperwork coming through that particular office. And that paperwork used to be done at the, uh, front counter at the Engineering Department, you know, when it was building code, when they were doing the inspections, okay? That activity shifted over, so they always had a half-time, now that they've had some time to analyze how much work, uh, goes into all the inspections and keeping things up, the, the, uh, fire chief is, is recommending that we go from a half-time to a full-time. That opens up that half-time, uh, police position that was still needed in the Police Department, so that's, those two things are tight at the hip. You know, you do one, you know, you gotta do the other, basically, if you make the assumption that it's needed, you know, in the Police Department or the Fire Department. Fire chief has stated, you know, it's needed, he's, he's submitted, uh, the justification, which he believes warrants, you know, a full-time position. Uh, police chief is working on his justification for both the police investigator and the part-time administrative employee.
I guess at some point, we'd probably need to share that justification with the council, so that they, you know, can make an informed decision.
Yeah, if, if you leave it in here, you can always pull it out, but if you take it out, it's unlikely you're gonna be able to put it back in there. You know, if, if you do decide it's warranted.
Well, if we set the levy at five percent in either any place that you put it, I mean, you can put it in and out when.
The person does have to be very conservative, absolutely.
Yeah.
But I think we all talked last time that we're not gonna do this twenty-five percent increase and have the whole public go crazy, and, and we cut it down, and they feel like it's a bait and switch, and there's all that whole complaint that I'll never support again, so I, I think we need to stick to a number, whatever that number might be. So can we move to the next page then and just take a?
Well, as long as we're just talking here, one thing too that I know Mary brought up at the last budget work session we have, that we should have more of these anyway, and I think it's something that when we're done tonight, we approve the levy, that we should put in the next, don't wait till December, but somewhere between that, even before we meet with the administrative staff and stuff, that we sit down again as the City Council and go through the, the budget, discuss some of these issues if we want.
Have another work session, I mean.
Another work session, yeah, they, I mean, there are always beneficial, they always pick something up.
I'd be comfortable with that.
So, I mean, we could do that later on after the meeting, or before the meeting's over, whatever, set a date.
Maybe, uh, a way of looking at this is we, you know, if we wanted to set the levy at, at five and a quarter, let's say, that's it. And then you can take out things you don't want and put things in you do want, or you just arbitrarily pick and, you know, eh, eh, you got the items for council decisions, which was retail economic development, sinking fund, fire truck, city facilities, so and so, all, all of those numbers. Or do you say, we may do those personnel things, and we wanna do, we wanna put money in for the fire truck, and we wanna put a hundred thousand in. That's gonna jack it up one and a quarter percent, so do you pick like an eight percent to just say, we don't know what we're gonna pick from this list, but we know we wanna put money in the fire, the fire truck, and we'll make that decision as we go through the work session.
Right.
And then when you finally get that all settled out, what you're gonna fund, what you're not gonna fund, you may be at three percent, you know, who knows? Or you may be at six percent, but I think, I, I don't think the idea is to, to work it out now, you know, the idea is to kinda say, what would we want in there, and then work through the work session and say, is that legitimate or not, because you can always go down in levy, but you can't go up, so you set the levy too low, something comes up, you say, I really do wanna put money in for the fire truck, then it's gonna have to just come out of your, your general fund reserve if you're gonna do that. So, I mean, it's up to you, whatever you wanna do, but we have to set a minimum, or a maximum, we have to set a maximum levy tonight, whatever that number is.
So you want to continue, what's that, you wanna continue?
I do wanna to go to the side that you took off before, I wanna make a comment on it, you gotta advance.
Which one?
Oh, the last line.
Yeah. Keep going. Uh, this one here, if I understood you correct, the sinking fund, city facilities, the four hundred and fifty-five is in the budget, or we have to decide on?
It is not in the budget right now.
Okay, at present, I didn't get a chance to look at the history, what have we normally done each year, you know?
It's been, it's been one of the things that's been played with the most within the budgeting process, this year we have, what did I say, four?
It has been years, it was, it was the flex.
Three hundred and seventy-five point in the years here.
Three hundred and seventy-five?
It's been lower, there's been years where there's been nothing.
That's, that's the fund that we utilize, that if we had funds, we stuck it in, if we didn't have funds, we didn't. Knowing full well that, that, uh, you know, when you get two hundred and twenty, or two point two million dollars, not all the roofs are gonna go to the same thing.
Correct, and do you remember how long ago Red, the, the previous finance director, we set that up? Is it like eight years?
Oh, yeah, at least.
Eight, nine years?
At least, maybe more than that.
I know the numbers given were, projections were really strong on all of our buildings when we did the worksheet.
I know shortly before he left, they had, they spent a lot of time going through that spreadsheet and making sure all the facilities were on there, and this year, we even went through and added stuff to the Herman Monument.
Okay, that's what I wanna just double check on.
I know there's really just been a brief discussion on the retail economic development, but I still don't understand why that got pulled. And that we didn't really vote on that, or it wasn't really much of a discussion on that, other than, um, more talk with our, our other development corporation, so.
There was no vote, it, it just was, you know, there was discussion at that meeting, and, and, uh, when we were putting the budget together, we just said, how do you get down to five percent? As simple as that, and this is our, this would be, let's say, our priority list, and you may have a different priority list, and, and you plug stuff back in and, and take stuff out.
So just because I've been trying to listen to this and figure, what's on the screen now is not in the five percent budget?
Correct.
Right.
It is not there.
It is not there.
So if you add it, it would go up, and then you could take it out later, but if you stay with the five percent, none of this will get added in.
Not without taking something else out.
Or reserves, which we don't wanna touch, but we.
If, if you take the police investigator out, you get ninety thousand dollars that you can put towards something else.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that I knew that this was not included in the five percent that you're talking about, or five and a half.
Yep. Uh, Mr. Schmitz, when was the last master park plan done?
Um, it was nineteen eighty-nine, except for the update in the comp plan of two thousand and seven, so, um, the, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars in that line item is for an update of the system master plan, but also a few unit plans that need updates, including Riverside Park, um, and Herman Heights Park.
Another big one in parks is the Herman Heights retaining wall, I, I just remember a few years back that we were talking that maybe that would be done with Center Street project, Mr. Kaler, is that what we were trying to look for?
I, I, uh, investigated the option of using some state aid funding for that, and I think the history state aid engineer and offices state aid are kinda more on that, it's not really part of the structural integrity of the street. I think you'd probably have to attempt to get some different grant monies if you wanted to try and find something else, or to renew money is an option as well, in my opinion.
Wouldn't, wouldn't this, uh, the, the retaining wall be something that we could get through the state grant program?
After we update the master plan for Herman Heights Park and apply for regional designation, those would be two more steps we need to complete before we're, um, able to apply for legacy grants. Need to be re- regionally designated, or designated as a regional park or a regional trail, and prior to that, you need to have a master plan, a unit master plan.
So is that something that, is this a two-year process, we could wait?
Retaining wall? Uh, in my opinion, it's a safety, um, hazard and a, um, maintenance, uh, concern.
Kinda looks like it.
Yes, and my proposal is to eliminate that and slope it like the Fifth North, I see's hill.
I think something needs to be done with it.
Yeah, it's getting worse every year, yeah.
Now, we do have three quarters of a million dollars earmarked in renew for Herman Heights, to relocate Monument Street off the crest of the hill and put in parking infrastructure.
Can we use that renewed money for this? Since it really was a part of it, I mean, a part of Herman project.
No, that's, that was, excuse me, Mr. President, I, I think the designation, the statute is pretty specific, and it would not have provided this.
That's what I thought.
Wonderful, when we sold it to the citizens, the renewed project, there was a safety concern, it was, it was a safety, and, and we were making a bus turnaround, parking lot improvements to the park. We were discussing it.
But the wall wasn't.
The wall was not discussed.
No.
Just, just to clarify that, I have a, a question for Steve Kaler and, uh, Mr. Schmitz, okay, now, you're talking about sloping, removing retaining wall, they're under block, you're sloping it, correct?
Yes.
And I think that was discussed in, uh, Steve's office, but wasn't there a lot of complications with that, we have the restroom up there, a sanitary sewer line? I saw the topo drawings that somebody provided us, I don't wanna run into a snag where, well, we gotta move a restroom, we need a hundred and fifty thousand more, we gotta move a sanitary sewer line, we need a hundred thousand more, I just wanna make sure of that.
Uh, Mr. President and council members, um, you're correct, counselor, there are some conflicts with regard to the existing restroom and the spruce trees up on top of the hill, there have been some preliminary design efforts put forth, but I think as part of the final design process that would have to be flushed, flushed out, you may have to relocate the restroom, and that's correct.
So two hundred thousand is not covering this project?
Um, I didn't do the estimate, I can't recall.
I just wanna make sure that, not that come June, while we're a hundred thousand dollars short, we gotta move a restroom.
There may be an option to do a hybrid, where you do a small retaining wall to maintain that existing facility in the trees, and you can slope some of the lower portions. Needs to be some geotactical investigation, we don't know what's in that hillside or what's gonna hold, so.
So just because we got it in the budget, then it'll come back to us before anything is going to be done?
Oh, absolutely, oh, yeah.
I had three of these larger ticket items in my department requested budget of the two hundred thousand dollar range, including the Herman Heights retaining wall, uh, replacing the field lights on Field One at Harmon Park, um, and towers, the entire infrastructure, the old wooden poles on Field One along Garden Street, that was two hundred grand. And then, uh, two hundred and five thousand dollars requested for our first splash pad, uh, probably in the upper north hilltop area, where there are no wading pools. And so through discussions between the finance director and myself, we pulled out those, those two. And so, through discussions between the finance director and myself, we pulled out those, those two items, the splash pad and, um, the Harmon Park, uh, Field One lighting project, which totaled four hundred and five thousand dollars. And also fifty grand to replace the analog controller with a digital controller in the Glockenspiel. So that was four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars that was pulled off the parking rec table. That's not in the projected budget at this point, and you have that in, information in the packet.
Well, I know the county is looking at a four and a quarter percent, we're looking at five and a quarter, I don't know what the, where the school's at yet at this point, if they made their decision or not, but I, I really don't wanna see us, um, pushing much over five percent, that's a lot for our taxpayers if you start adding all that out. So I just challenge us to roll up our sleeves and take a look at all the categories one more time, just like we used to do back seventy years ago when we were looking at horrific budget times and, um, I think there's some things on here that we need to put back in and some things that we probably need to take like a cutting or delaying, whether it's six months or whether it's, or another year. So, something to be thinking about as well, too.
Or identify a different, uh, funding source? Yeah.
Yep. So I don't know if we're ready to throw a motion out there on this or not.
So are we gonna look at five, the five and a quarter that we have set?
I'm at five and a half in my head is where I was gonna, thought we'd balance out at, but I don't know where everybody else is at.
Or do we give ourselves a little bit of leave room at eight to, I mean, granted, I don't think we would, any of us would approve anything over five.
Yeah, we should stick to five. Like it forces us to.
I say it forces us, we stick to the five this evening. So when they get that preliminary tax statement, City Hall isn't ringing off the hook.
I'd be fine at five, five and a half, that's, that's the max, so.
So what are we at now, five and a half or five and a?
If I take the fifteen thousand for the City Hall doors out of the city facilities fund, we are at five point zero seven percent.
We still got discussions on a lot of these other items, so. Well, let's, uh, see if we can move something forward, I'll, I'll offer a, we're at here on sixty. I will offer a resolution for the two thousand eighteen budget with a five point five percent maximum increase.
Second.
We got a motion, a second, off resolution, any more discussion? That would be five point five. Finance director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item sixty, consider resolution to accept donations offered to the city for the parking rec department for identified purposes.
Sorry, as part of that resolution, it also sets the preliminary hearing for December sixth.
Oh, October day, yes.
Or the final, the public hearing for the sixth of December.
Gonna deal with. Head for item sixty.
Sixty.
Oh, I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading, to accept the donations to the city of New Ulm for the Parks and Recs Department.
Second.
Second. We got a motion, a second, off resolution, waive reading, any more discussion? See none? Finance director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Item sixty, consider motion to approve the final assessment rolls for the two thousand sixteen surface reconstruction project and set a date for public hearing for Tuesday, October seventeen, two thousand seventeen, at four thirty P M.
I'll offer that motion.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, any more discussion? See none? All favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, no? Motion carries. Item six F, consider resolution to approve the request from Dwayne Wender to vacate an easement area between nineteen seventeen, nineteen twenty-one, Allison Avenue.
I'll offer resolution, waive the reading.
Second.
We got a motion, a second, off resolution, waive reading, any more discussion? See none? Finance director, please call a roll.
Yeah, I can do it to Ron in just a second. I meant, who was the second on that one, sorry?
Got me?
Who was the second? I was, I seconded, now I do. Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item six G, consider motion to approve the request from the New Ulm Chamber to use three parking stalls within the City Hall parking lot located west of Chamber of Commerce Laundromat Building to accommodate Oktoberfest-related activities.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, any discussion? See none? All favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, no? Motion carries. At this time, we'll go all the way back.
We wanna get people a little more.
We have an addendum.
Yep.
Oh, we got the addendum.
The addendum's gonna require a vote.
All right, let's get out of here. Human error. Is that this one? There we go.
Yep.
Okay. We have addendum. Number one.
We need a motion. Motion to suspend rules and.
I'll offer the motion to suspend the rules for action on the addendum.
Second.
We got a motion, a second, any more discussion? All favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, no? Motion carries. Motion, okay. Consider motion to schedule a public hearing for noise variance request from Shane Zuzdorff and Heidi Holm to have amplified outdoor music during the wedding reception to be held, uh, twenty, uh, two twenty-six, twentieth North Street, Saturday, October seventh, two thousand seventeen.
I'll offer the motion.
Second.
We got a motion, a second, any more discussion?
Do we have a lot of, and I know this'll come up at our, our public hearing, but are there a lot of residents in that? I know this is top industrial park area, but.
This is garages and.
I just wanna make sure if there is, they should have a secondary plan, just in case.
I think diagonally across the street, you've got an apartment complex, but it's basically industrial everywhere else.
But the notices will go out to those folk.
Everybody within five hundred.
Does that reach that apartment building, probably? Well, they should have backup plan, just in case.
I think there's three, three residents, I think Dave was signaling.
Okay.
So.
All right.
Okay. At this time, we'll go to item.
Oh, we got a vote on that.
Oh, sorry. All favor say aye?
Aye.
Close, no? Motion carries. Item two A, conduct the public hearing, the first reading ordinance number seventeen dash zero one A, the ordinance number seventeen dash zero one nine, fifth series, mending chapter twenty, part five of the city code, city of New Ulm, relative to cable television franchise. And just for all the public out there that's watching this, this is gonna be a fifty-four minute reading, and if you have other programs you'd like to watch.
In other words, run, run.
Yeah, please sign off and go for it. All right, Roger.
Um.
How does the screen is live?
I'm sorry, what? What?
Your, your screen is, what's showing on, your screen is live on TV.
Well, we don't have a live screen, it's just.
Just go ahead.
Go ahead.
All right. Uh, Mr. President, uh, there are two ordinances for the council to be considering. Um, these result from probably two plus years of negotiations with, uh, New Ulm Telecom and Comcast, who have the existing cable TV franchises. Uh, they have to be individual ordinances, what I've done is to, we're also required to read the ordinances one time at the first reading. So instead of reading both ordinances, each of which is about twenty-three pages long, I've pre-recorded reading the identical content in each, where the ordinances differ and may note of that during the course of what I've recorded. Uh, I know there are representatives from Comcast and New Ulm Telecom, or president, present, who've been waiting throughout this meeting. I don't know before the reading begins, if any of the members of the council have got any questions about the ordinances, that they may have to be addressed by the representatives of the company. If you don't, I'm sure they probably be not stick around for fifty-four minutes to hear these, um.
We can't tell you it was passed by the New Ulm Cable Commission without any objections.
So, unless anyone has any questions, I would.
Would everybody wanna turn their mics off before we start?
This is a first reading of two new proposed city ordinances. Ordinance number seventeen zero one eight, fifth series, and ordinance number seventeen zero one nine, fifth series. The ordinances are essentially identical. I will be reading ordinance number seventeen zero one eight, and where appropriate, will read the language that is unique to ordinance number seventeen zero one nine. Except in those situations, the language in each ordinance is the same. Ordinance number seventeen zero one eight, fifth series, city of New Ulm, Brown County, Minnesota, and ordinance will commending chapter twenty, part five, of the city code of the city of New Ulm relative to a cable television franchise. Whereas by ordinance eighty-three dash zero two six, second series, originally approved January twenty-three, nineteen eighty-four, and has subsequently modified by, by ordinances eighty-eight dash zero four six, second series, ninety-nine, zero three six, third series, and zero zero dash zero five two, third series. The city granted to Time Warner Cable and its successors a cable television franchise. Ordinance number seventeen zero one nine provides, whereas by ordinance zero zero dash zero five one, third series, originally approved August twenty-two, come two thousand, the city granted to New Ulm Telecom and its successors a cable television franchise. And whereas under its terms, said franchise has expired, and whereas the city of New Ulm having determined that the financial, legal, and technical ability of the franchisee is reasonably sufficient to provide the services, facilities, and equipment necessary to meet the future cable-related needs of the community, desires to enact this ordinance granting a franchise to the franchisee for the construction, operation, and maintenance of a cable system on the terms and conditions set forth herein, be it ordained by the city council of the city of New Ulm. Subdivision one, definition of terms. For the purpose of this franchise agreement, capitalized terms, phrases, words, and abbreviations shall have the meaning described to them in the Cable Communications Policy Act of nineteen eighty-four, as amended from time to time, forty-seven U S C sections five two one at Sec, the Cable Act. So paragraph A, access channels means any channel or portion of a channel utilized for public, educational, or governmental programming. Small I, public access, means access where community-based, non-commercial organizations, groups, or individual members of the general public on a nondiscriminatory basis are the primary users. Small I I, educational access means access where schools are the primary users, having editorial control over programming and services. For purposes of this definition, school means any state-accredited educational institution, public or private, including, for example, primary and secondary schools, colleges, and universities. Small I I I, government access means access where governmental institutions or their designees are the primary users having editorial control over programming and services. So paragraph P, basic cable service means any service tier which includes lawful retransmission of local television broadcast signals. Basic cable service as defined herein shall not be inconsistent with forty-seven U S C section five two two three. Subdivision C, cable service shall mean, A, the one-way transmission to subscribers of I, video programming or I I, other programming service, and B, subscriber interaction, if any, which is required for the selection or use of such video programming or other programming service. For the purposes of this definition, video programming is programming provided by or generally considered comparable to programming provided by a television broadcast station. Another programming service is information that a cable operator makes available to all subscribers generally. Subdivision D, cable system shall have the meaning specified for cable system in the act. Unless otherwise specified, it shall in this document refer to the cable system constructed and operated in the city under this franchise. City and grantor is the city of New Ulm, Minnesota. F, drop shall mean the cable that connects the subscriber terminal to the nearest feeder cable of the cable system. G, effective date means the date on which this ordinance becomes effective pursuant to the provisions of the city charter and code of the city of New Ulm, Minnesota. H, franchise area means the present legal boundaries of the city as, as of the effective date, and shall also include any additions thereto by annexation or other legal means. Franch, I, franchisee and grantee is Comcast of Arkansas slash Florida slash Louisiana slash Minnesota slash Mississippi slash Tennessee, L L C, a Minnesota limited liability company. For the purposes of ordinance seventeen dash zero one nine, subdivision I, franchisee and grantee is New Ulm Telecom, Inc., a Minnesota corporation. Subdivision J, gross revenues shall mean all revenue derived directly or indirectly by the grantee from the operation of the cable system to provide cable services within the franchise area. Gross revenues shall include, by way of example and not limitation, revenues from basic service, other cable service tiers, monthly fees for programming offered on a per-channel or per-program basis, installation and reconnection, leased channel fees, converter rentals, advertising revenues subject only to the limitation in the following sentence, and other cable services offered within the system in the franchise area. Gross revenues shall not include commissions paid to third-party advertising agencies that are not all under control by grantee. Gross revenues also does not include P E G fees, F C C regulatory fees, or any taxes or services furnished by the grantee herein imposed directly upon any subscriber or user by the state, grantor, or other governmental unit, and collected by the grantee on behalf of said governmental unit, such as a sales tax. The franchise fee is not such a tax. The grantor acknowledges and agrees that the grantee shall maintain its books and records in a manner consistent with generally accepted accounting principles, G A A P, or successor accounting principles with which the grantee may be required to comply under the state or federal law. To the extent revenues are received by the grantee for the provision of a discounted bundle of services, which includes cable services and non-cable services, the grantee shall calculate revenues to be included in gross revenues in accordance with G A A P. Subdivision K, person means any natural person in all domestic and foreign corporations, closely-held corporations, associations, syndicates, joint-stock corporations, partnerships of every kind, close businesses, common law trusts, societies, and slash or any other legal entity. L, public ways shall mean the surface of and the space above and below, any public street, road, highway, freeway, lane, path, public way, alley, court, sidewalk, boulevard, parkway, drive, or any easement or right-of-way now or hereafter held by the city which shall entitle grantee to the use thereof for the purpose of installing or transmitting over poles, wires, cables, conductors, ducts, conduits, vaults, manholes, amplifiers, appliances, attachments, and other properties may be ordinarily necessary and pertinent to a cable system. M, subscriber, subscribers means any person who or which lawfully subscribes to a cable service provided by grantee by means of or in connection with the cable system. Subdivision two, grant of authority. A, grant. The grantor hereby grants to the grantee a non-exclusive franchise authorizing the grantee to construct and operate a cable system in the public ways within the franchise area, and for that purpose to erect, install, construct, repair, replace, reconstruct, maintain, or retain in any public ways such poles, wires, cables, conductors, ducts, conduits, vaults, manholes, pedestals, amplifiers, appliances, attachments, and other related property or equipment as may be necessary or pertinent to the cable system, and to provide such services over the cable system as may be lawfully allowed. B, term of franchise. The term of the franchise granted here shall be ten years, commencing upon the effective date of the franchise unless the franchise is renewed or is lawfully terminated in accordance with the terms of this franchise and the Cable Act. C, renewal. Any renewal of this franchise shall be governed by and comply with the provisions of section six two six of the Cable Act, as amended. D, reservation of authority. Nothing in this franchise shall, I, abrogate the right of the city to perform any public works or public improvements of any description. I I, be construed as a waiver of any codes or ordinances of general applicability promulgated by the city. Or I I I, be construed as a waiver or release of the rights of the city and into the public ways. Subdivision three, construction and maintenance of the cable system. Subdivision three, construction and maintenance of the cable system. A, construction. Subject to grantor's nondiscriminatory supervision and control and generally applicable law, grantee may erect, install, construct, repair, replace, reconstruct, and retain in, on, over, under, upon, across, and along the rights of way of grantor such wires, cables, conductors, ducts, conduits, vaults, manholes, amplifiers, pedestals, attachments, and other property and equipment as are necessary and pertinent to the operation of a cable system within the City of DeWolfe, Minnesota. B, technical standards. Cable service shall be provided at a minimum in compliance with the technical standards promulgated by the Federal Communications Commission relating to cable communication systems, contained in subpart K of part seventy-six of the Federal Communications Commissioner's Rules and Regulations relating to cable communication systems and found in Code of Federal Regulations, Title forty-seven, section seventy-six point six oh one to seventy-six point six one seven. The results of tests required by the Federal Communications Commission must be filed within ten days of the conduct of the test with the grantor. C, new grades or lines. If the grades or lines of any public right of way within the franchise area are lawfully changed at any time during the term of the franchise, then the grantee shall, upon reasonable advance written notice from grant- from the grantor, which shall not be less than ten, ten business days, and at its own cost and expense, protect or promptly alter or relocate the cable system or any part thereof so as to conform with any such new grades or lines. If public subfunds are available to any other user of the public right-of-way for the purpose of defraying the cost of any of the foregoing, the grantor shall notify the grantee of such funding and make available such funds to the grantee. D, relocation at request of third-party. The grantee shall, upon reasonable prior written request of any person holding a permit issued by the city to move any structure, temporarily move its wires to permit the moving of such structure, provided i, the grantee may impose a reasonable charge on any person for the movement of its wires, and such charge may be required to be paid in advance of the movement of its wires, and III, the grantee is given not less than ten business days' advanced written notice to arrange for such temporary relocation. E, undergrounding and beautification projects. In the event all users of the public right-of-way relocate aerial facilities underground as part of an undergrounding or neighborhood beautification project, grantee shall participate in the planning for relocation of its aerial facilities contemporaneously with other utilities. Grantee's relocation costs shall be included in any computation of necessary project funding by the municipality or private parties. Grantee shall be entitled to reimbursement of its relocation costs from public or private funds raised for the project and made available to other users of the public way. If such funding is not available, grantee shall be responsible for the cost for relocating its facilities. F, line extension, small i. Grantee shall construct and operate its cable system so as to provide cable service within the franchise area where there exists a density equivalent of seven drilling units per one-quarter mile of feeder cable as measured from the nearest active plant of the cable system if the extension is to be constructed using aerial plant, and nine drilling units per one-quarter mile of feeder cable is measured from the nearest active plant if the extension is to be constructed using underground plant. The city, for their part, shall require developers and utility companies to provide the grantee with at least fifteen days' advance notice of an available open trench for the placement of necessary cable. III, where the density is less than that specified above, grantee shall inform persons requesting service of the possibility of paying for installation of a line extension and shall offer to provide them with a free written estimate of the cost which shall be provided within thirty working days of such a request. Grantee may offer the persons requesting service the opportunity to prepay some of all of the necessary line extensions according to its regular business policies. Grantee shall at all times implement such line extension policy in a nondiscriminatory manner throughout the city. III, any residential unit located within one hundred twenty-five feet from the nearest point of access on the street for which the cable system is designed to serve the site shall be connected to the cable system at no charge other than the standard installation charge. Grantee shall, upon request of any potential subscriber residing in the city beyond the one hundred twenty-five-foot limit, extend service to such subscriber provided that the subscriber shall pay the net additional drop cost unless the grantee agrees to waive such costs. To the extent required by applicable laws, grantee agrees that it shall impose installation costs for nonstandard installations in a uniform and nondiscriminatory manner throughout the city. G, police powers. Grantee's rights here under are subject to the police powers of grantor to adopt and enforce ordinances necessary to the safety, health, and welfare of the public, and grantee agrees to comply with all generally applicable and competitively neutral provisions of the city code. Grantor shall have the right to adopt from time to time such ordinances as may be deemed necessary in the exercise of its police power provided that such hereand-after enacted ordinances shall be reasonable and not materially modify the terms of this franchise. Any conflict between the provisions of this franchise and any other present or future lawful exercise of the city's police power shall be resolved in favor of the franchisee. Grantee reserves all rights it may have to challenge any modifications to the city code whether arising in contract or at law. The city reserves all of its rights and defenses to such challenges whether arising in contract or at law. H, special testing. The party shall share the costs of any required special testing as a result of the application, requirement, or enforcement of any public law or regulation. The city shall endeavor to so arrange its request for such special testing so as to minimize hardship or inconvenience to grantee or to the subscribers caused by such testing before ordering such tests. Grantee shall be afforded thirty days to correct problems or complaints which tests were ordered. The city shall meet with the grantee prior to requiring special tests to discuss the need for such, and if possible, visually inspect those locations which are the focus of concern. If after such meetings and inspections, the city wishes to commence special tests, and the thirty days have elapsed without correction to the matter in controversy or unresolved complaints, the test shall be conducted by a qualified engineer mutually selected by city and grantee based upon a mutually agreed-upon scope of work. Except as is expressly provided for herein, nothing in this franchise shall be considered as a waiver of any rights of the grantor or the grantee. I, subscriber privacy. No signals of a class four cable communications channel may be transmitted from a subscriber terminal for purposes of monitoring individual viewing patterns or practices without the express written permission of the subscriber. A request for permission must be contained in a separate document with a prominent statement that the subscriber is authorizing the permission in full knowledge of its provisions. The written permission must be for a limited period of time, not to exceed one year, which is renewable at the option of the subscriber. A penalty may be invoked for a subscriber's failure to provide or renew the authorization. The authorization must be revocable by any time by the subscriber without penalty of any kind, small i. No information or data obtained on monitoring transmission of a signal from a subscriber terminal, including but not limited to lists of the names and addresses of the subscribers or lists that identify the viewing habits of subscribers, may be sold or otherwise made available to any person other than to the grantee and its employees for internal business use, or to the subscriber who is the subject of that information unless the grantee has received specific written authorization from the subscriber to make the data available. III, written permission from the subscriber must not be required for the systems conducting system-wide or individually addressed electronic sweeps for the purpose of verifying system integrity or monitoring for the purpose of billing. Confidentiality of this information is subject to paragraph three point ten A. III, for purposes of these provisions, class four cable communications channel means a signaling path provided by a cable communication system to transmit signals of any type from a subscriber terminal to another point in the communication system. Subdivision four, customer bills, privacy protection, and subscriber complaint procedures. A, response to customers and cooperation with grantor. Grantee shall promptly respond to all requests for service, repair, installation, and information from subscribers. Grantee acknowledges the grantor's interest in the proper resolution of all cable complaints and shall work in close cooperation with the grantor to resolve complaints. B, customer service standards. The grantee shall comply with the FCC standards and requirements for customer service set forth on exhibit D, and as may be amended in the future throughout the terms of this franchise. C, privacy protection. The grantee shall comply with all applicable federal and state privacy laws, including section six three one of the Cable Act and regulations adopted pursuant thereto. D, local office. Grantee shall maintain a convenient local customer service and bill payment location for matters such as and such as receiving subscriber payments, handling billing questions, equipment replacement, and customer service information. If grantee does not maintain an office within or within the reasonable vicinity of the City of DeWolfe, equipment malfunctioning and requiring timely replacement will be exchanged, replaced by truckload or an alternative arrangement in grantee's discretion. In the alternative, grantee shall maintain a drop box within the City of DeWolfe for receiving subscriber payments. The drop box shall be emptied regularly, and grantee shall take steps to ensure that subscribers are not inadvertently or mistakenly charged, late fees, or otherwise penalized for making use of the drop box. Grantee shall also make equipment changes and exchanges available via mail order or similar service made available to all subscribers. Grantee shall comply with the standards and requirements for customer service set forth below during the term of this franchise. Subdivision five, oversight and regulation by franchising authority. A, franchise fees. The grantee shall pay to the city a franchise fee in amount equal to five percent of annual gross revenues received from the operation of the cable system to provide cable service to the franchise area that has entered into a cable franchise agreement with grantor. Grantee shall not be compelled to pay any higher percentage of franchise fees than any other cable video service provider providing service in the franchise area with which grantor has a franchise agreement. The payment of franchise fees shall be made in a regular, made on a quarterly basis, and shall be due forty-five days after the close of each calendar quarter. Each franchise fee payment shall be accompanied by an accurate report prepared by a representative of the grantee showing the basis for the computation of the franchise fees paid during that period. Upon request, grantee shall supply such other information as is necessary to allow grantor to verify the accuracy of the fees. B, audit. Grantee authorizes grantor the right to audit grantee's accounting and financial records upon reasonable notice for the purpose of determining grantee's compliance with section five point one herein, and grantee shall file with grantor at least annually reports of gross revenues. C, subscriber charges and contracts. Statements identifying current subscriber charges and the length and terms of residential subscriber contracts, if any, shall be provided by grantee and shall be available for public inspection of identification located within the City of DeWolfe, Minnesota. Subdivision six, transfer of cable system or franchise or control of grantee. A, transfer of ownership or control, small i, no sale, transfer, assignment, or fundamental corporate change as defined in Minstat section two three eight point zero eight three of this franchise shall take place without the written approval of the grantor, which approval may not be unreasonably withheld. A written request to the grantor for its approval must be made by the parties to the sale or transfer. Said approval shall not be required where grantee grants a security interest to its franchise and assets to secure indebtedness. III, any sale or transfer of stock in grantee's source to create a new controlling interest in the system shall be subject to the requirements of this section six point one. The term controlling interest is used herein is not limited to the majority stock ownership, but includes actual working control and whatever matter exercised. III, the parties to the sale or transfer shall make even requests to grantor for its approval of a sale or transfer and furnish all information required by law on grantor. IV, the grantor shall act by ordinance on the request within one hundred twenty days if the request provided is received all the information required by this franchise and/or by applicable law. The grantor and grantee may by mutual agreement at any time extend the one hundred twenty-day period subject to the foregoing. If the grantor fails to render a final decision on the request within one hundred twenty days, such request shall be deemed granted unless the requesting party and grantor agree to an extension of time. V, in reviewing a request for sale or transfer, the city may inquire into the legal, technical, and financial qualifications of the prospective controlling party or transferee, and grantee shall assist the city in so inquiry. The city may condition said sale or transfer upon such terms and conditions as it deems reasonably appropriate in accordance with applicable law. And the I, notwithstanding anything to the contrary in this in this subsection, the prior approval of the city shall not be required for any sale, assignment, or transfer of the franchise or cable system to an entity controlling, controlled by, or under the same common controls as grantee, provided that the proposed assigning or transfer must show financial responsibility as may be determined necessary by the city and must agree in writing to comply with all of the provisions of the franchise. Further, grantee may pledge the assets of the cable system for the purpose of refin- of financing without the consent of the city, provided that such pledge of assets shall not impair or mitigate grantee's responsibilities and capabilities to meet all of its obligations under the provisions of this franchise. B, option to grantor. If the franchise or grantee's cable system is to be transferred or sold, grantor shall have the right of first refusal to purchase the cable system. Subdivision seven, PEG access programming. Number of PEG access channels. Grantee will continue to provide three PEG access channels in standard definition, SD format, for the term of the franchise. B, access channel locations. I, access channels shall be carried on the basic cable service tier to the extent required by applicable law. Nothing herein precludes the grantee from charging for equipment needed for basic cable service, III. Grantee shall make reasonable efforts to minimize channel movements of access channels, III. Grantee shall provide the city with a minimum of sixty days' notice and use best efforts to provide one hundred twenty days' notice prior to the time access channel designations are changed. In the event of such changes in designation, grantee shall, at grantee's expense, include the notice of the changes on one month of any regular paper billing submitted to grantee's subscribers to be mailed prior to the implementation of the change in designation. IV, grantee agrees not to encrypt the access channels differently than any other commercial channels available on the cable system. C, access video standards, small i. Standard definition, X, SD, digital access channels. A, grantee shall provide three activated downstream channels for PEG access used in a standard definition, SD, digital format in grantee's basic service, SD access channel. Grantee shall carry all lawfully required components of the SD access channel signals provided by a designated access provider. A designated access provider shall be responsible for providing the SD access channel signal in an SD format to the demarcation point at the designated point of origin for the SD access channel. Grantee shall transport and distribute the SD access channel signal on its cable system and shall not unreasonably discriminate against SD access channels with respect to accessibility, functionality, and in the application of any applicable Federal Communications Commission rules and regulations, including, without limitations, subpart K, channel signal standards. B, with respect to signal quality, grantee shall not be required to carry an SD access channel in a higher-quality format than that of the SD access channel signal delivered to grantee, but grantee shall distribute the SD access channel signal without degradation. Upon reasonable written notice by a designated access provider, grantee shall verify signal delivery to subscribers with the designated access provider consistent with the requirements of this section seven point three. C, grantee shall be responsible for costs associated with the transmission of SD access signals on its side of the demarcation point, which shall mean up to and including the modulator where the city signal is converted into a format to be transmitted to grantee. Designated access provider shall be responsible for costs associated with SD access signal transmission on its side of the demarcation point. III, on or after January one, twenty eighteen, the city may provide a written request to grantee that one SD PEG channel be converted to a high-definition channel. Grantee shall have one hundred twenty days from the date of receipt to the city's request to implement the HD PEG access channel. III, the HD PEG access channel provided under this section will not replace the PEG access channel described in section seven point one of this franchise. The city may continue to silocalcast PEG programming on its SD PEG channel. The city shall only be responsible for the production costs associated with the provisions of an HD channel and in all costs associated with any modification in the PEG access channels or signals after the PEG access channels slash signals leave the city's currently designated playback facility shall be provided through free of charge by grantee. However, the grantee shall have the right to offset from the PEG fee which be to the actual cost for capital equipment which grantee is required to purchase to facilitate the distribution of the PEG access channels upstream to grantee's head end. D, ownership of access channels. Grantee does not relinquish its ownership of ultimate right of control over a channel by designated it for PEG use. A PEG access user, whether an individual, educational, or governmental user, acquires no property or other interest by virtue of the use of a channel positioned so designated. Grantee shall not exercise editorial control over any public, educational, or governmental use of a channel position except grantee may refuse to transmit any public access program or portion of a public access program that contains obscenity, indecency, or nudity in violation of applicable law. Nothing herein shall be construed to obligate grantee to monitor the content of the PEG access channels, and grantee specifically disclaims any obligation to do so. E, non-commercial use of PEG. Permitted non-commercial uses of the access channels shall include, by way of example and not limitation, one, identification of financial supporters to s- supporters similar to what is provided on public broadcasting stations, or two, the solicitation of financial support for the provision of PEG programming by the grantor, or third-party users for charitable, educational, or governmental purposes, or three, programming offered without charge by accredited, nonprofit, educational institutions which may, for example, offer telecourses over an access channel. F, access channel carriage. Small i, the grantor may request and grantee shall provide an additional access channel when the cumulative time on all of the existing access channels combined meets the following standard. One of the one of the access channels in use during eighty percent of the weekdays, Monday through Friday, for eighty percent of the time during a consecutive three-hour period for six weeks running, and there is a demand for use of an additional channel for the same purpose. The grantee has six months in which to provide a new access channel for the same purpose, provided that the provision of the additional channel or channels does not require the cable system to install converters. III, the grantor or its designees shall be responsible for developing, implementing, interpreting, and enforcing rules for PEG access channel use. III, the grantee shall monitor the access channels for technical quality to ensure that they meet FCC technical standards, including those applicable to the carriage of access channels, provided, however, that the grantee is not responsible for the production quality of PEG- PEG programming productions. The grantor or its designees shall be responsible for the production and quality of all PEG access programming. G. Free cable service to public buildings. Throughout the term of this franchise, grantee shall provide free of charge one service drop up to three digital television adapters if necessary and requested, and basic cable service, complimentary service, to all of the sites listed on Exhibit A attached here, too. H. Support grant for access costs. Commencing on the effective date of this franchise, grantee shall collect a per-subscriber, per-month fee, PEG fee, of thirty-three cents solely in support of PEG capital needs for the first five years of this franchise. Commencing on the fifth anniversary of the franchise, this per-subscriber payment shall increase to forty-five cents per month upon the written request of the city. Grantee will remit to the PEG fee to the city on a quarterly basis, and the PEG fee shall be due forty-five days after the close of each calendar year. This amount shall be in addition to any other required fee or payment upon the execution of this agreement by grantee. Grantee shall further tender the sum of twenty thousand dollars cash as an advance on the PEG fee, PEG advance payment. Grantee may recoup the PEG advance payment in accordance with applicable law. Upon written request, city will provide documentation to grantee of the expenditures made with the PEG fee. I. Return lines, access origination. Small i. All franchise providers of cable service shall maintain the existing fiber paths in place as of the effective date to facilitate PEG origination slash return capacity in the city and shall construct new return line origination points in accordance with Section seven point nine B herein. Grantee shall not be responsible for fiber replacement, but will be responsible for normal maintenance of the existing fiber. Grantee anticipates, but cannot guarantee, that this will result in minimal fiber expenditures by the city over the franchise term. Ii. Grantee shall construct two new return line origination points in addition to those now existing to the following locations. Twelve twelve North Franklin Street, Duell Civic Center. B. One twenty-two South Garden Street, Public Fieldhouse. The existing origination points grantee now has in place are at the following locations. C. One hundred North Broadway, City Hall Council Chamber. D. Seventeen North Broadway, Public Library, New Cat. E. Five fourteen North Washington Street, Duell Area Catholic Schools, Sixth North Intersection Exterior Location. Then as to ordinance seventeen dash zero one nine for Duell Telecom, four fourteen South Main Street, Feed to replace ISD eighty-eight at State Street, DAC. B. Sixteen hundred Oak Street, New Public High School. C. Five hundred North German Street, Johnson Park. Iii. The existing origination points grantee now has in place are at the following locations. A. One hundred North Broadway, City Hall Council Chamber. B. Seventeen North Broadway, Public Library, dash New Cat. C. Five fourteen North Washington Street, Duell Area Catholic Schools, Sixth North Intersection Exterior Location. D. Fifteen North State Street, previous ISD eighty-eight, now State Street Theater. Subdivision eight. Enforcement and termination of franchise. A. Procedure for remedying franchise violations. Small i. If the grantor reasonably believes that grantee has failed to perform any obligation under this franchise or has failed to perform in a timely manner, the grantor shall notify grantee in writing stating with reasonable specificity the nature of the alleged default. Grantee shall have forty-five days from the receipt of such notice. Two. A. Respond to the grantor contesting the grantor's assertion that a default has occurred and requesting a meeting in accordance with subsection B below. B. Cure the default. Or C. Notify the grantor that grantee cannot cure the default within the forty-five days because of the nature of the default. In the event the default cannot be cured within forty-five days, grantee shall promptly take all reasonable steps to cure the default and notify grantor in writing and in detail as to the exact steps that will be taken and the projected completion date. In such case, the grantor may set a meeting in accordance with subsection Ii below to determine whether additional time beyond the forty-five days specified above is indeed needed and whether grantee's proposed completion schedule and steps are reasonable. Ii. If grantee does not cure the alleged defect within the cure period stated above or by the projected completion date under subsection I C., organize the default and request a meeting in accordance with I A. Or if the grantor orders a meeting in accordance with subsection I C., the grantor shall set a meeting to investigate the issues for the existence of the alleged default. The grantor shall notify grantee of the meeting in writing, and such meeting shall take place no less than fifteen days after grantee's receipt of notice of the meeting. At the meeting, grantee shall be provided an opportunity to be heard and to present evidence in its defense. Small Iii. If after the meeting the grantor determines that a default exists, the grantor shall order grantee to correct or remedy the default or breach within fifteen days or within such or unreasonable timeframe as the grantor shall determine. In the event the grantee does not cure within such time to the grantor's reasonable satisfaction, the grantor may a) withdraw an amount from the letter of credit as monetary damages, b) recommend the revocation of this franchise pursuant to the procedures in subsection eight point three, or c) recommend any other legal or equitable remedy available under this franchise or any applicable law. Small vi. Grantee may appeal any decisions by grantor to an appropriate state or federal court or agency. B. Letter of credit. Small i. If there is a claim by the grantor of an uncured breach by grantee of a material provision of this franchise, then the grantor may require and grantee shall establish and provide within thirty days from receiving notice from the grantor to the grantor's security for the faithful performance by grantee of all of the provisions of this franchise, a letter of credit from a financial institution satisfactory to the grantor in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. Small ii. In the event that grantee establishes a letter of credit pursuant to the procedures of this section, then the letter of credit shall be maintained at twenty thousand dollars until the allegations of the uncured breach have been resolved. Small ii. After completion of the procedures set forth in Section eight A or other applicable provisions of this franchise, the letter of credit may be drawn upon by the grantor for purposes including but not limited to the following. A. Failure of the grantee to pay the grantor's sums due under the terms of this franchise. B. Reimbursement of out-of-pocket costs borne by the grantor to correct franchise violations not corrected by grantee. And C. Monetary remedies or damages assessed against grantee due to default or breach of franchise requirements. Small vi. The grantor shall give grantee written notice of any withdrawal under this subsection. Upon such withdrawal, within seven days following receipt of such notice, grantee shall store the letter of credit to the amount required under this franchise. Small vi. Grantee shall have the right to appeal to the city council for reimbursement in the event grantee believes that the letter of credit was drawn upon improperly. Grantee shall also have the right of judicial appeal if grantee believes the letter of credit has not been properly drawn upon in accordance with this franchise. Any funds the grantor erroneously or wrongfully withdraws from the letter of credit shall be returned to grantee with interest from the date of the call at a rate equal to the prime rate of interest as quoted in the Wall Street Journal. C. Termination procedure. If after grantor complies with the procedures in Section eight point one herein, the alleged breach is substantial and remains uncured, grantor may elect to terminate the franchise. The grantor may place the issue of revocation and termination of this franchise before the governing body of grantor to a regular meeting. If grantor decides there is cause or reason to terminate, the following procedures shall be followed. Small i. Grantor shall provide grantee with a minimum of thirty days prior written notice of the reason or cause for proposed termination. Small ii. Grantee shall be provided with an opportunity to be heard at a public hearing prior to any decision to terminate this franchise. After such hearing, if grantor decides to terminate this franchise, it shall provide grantee with written notice of its decision, together with written findings of fact supplementing such decision and stating the effective date of the franchise termination. Subdivision nine. Competitive equity. A. New video service provider. Small i. Notwithstanding any other provision in this agreement or any other provision of law, if any video service provider, VSP, enters into any agreement with the grantor or receives a cable television franchise from the city to provide video services to subscribers in the franchise area that the grantee believes to be on terms more favorable than the material obligations under this franchise, then the provisions of this paragraph will apply. Material obligations include but are not limited to a five percent franchise fee, PEG funding, PEG channels, courtesy services, and customer service obligations herein after material obligations. The grantee and the grantor shall enter into an agreement or other appropriate authorization if necessary, containing the same material obligations and conditions as are applicable to the VSP within sixty days after the grantee submits a written request to the grantor. Small ii. If there is no written franchise or agreement or other authorization between the new VSP and the grantor, the grantee and the grantor shall use the sixty-day period to develop and enter into an agreement or other appropriate authorization if necessary, that to the maximum extent possible, contains provisions and will ensure competitive equity between the grantee and other VSPs, taking into account the terms and conditions under which other VSPs are allowed to provide video services to subscribers. Small ii. The term video service provider, VSP, shall mean any entity using the public rights of way to provide multiple video programming services to subscribers for purchase or at no cost regardless of the transmission method, facilities, or technology used. To VSP shall include but is not limited to any entity that provides cable services or multi-channel, multi-point distribution services. Subdivision ten. Renewal abandonment. A. Franchise renewal. Any renewal of this franchise shall be in accordance with applicable laws. B. Abandonment. Small i. Notwithstanding any provision in this franchise, grantee may not abandon the cable communication system or a portion of it that is the subject of this franchise without having given three months prior written notice to grantor. Grantee may not abandon the cable communication system or a portion of it without compensating grantor for damages resulting to grantor from the abandonment. Small ii. Upon termination or forfeiture of this franchise, unless otherwise required by applicable law, grantee shall remove its cable, wires, and appliances from the streets, alleys, and other public places within the franchise area, subject to the generally applicable provisions of the city code, provided, however, that if grantee is providing services other than cable services or pursuant to Minnesota statutes, Section two three seven point zero one at SEC, the city shall not require the removal of the system. Iii. If grantee has failed to commence removal of the system as such part thereof as was designated by city within one hundred twenty days after written notice of city's demand for removal is given, or if grantee has failed to complete such removal within twelve months after written notice of city's demand for removal is given, city shall have the right to declare all right, title, and interest to the system to be in the city with all rights of ownership, including but not limited to the right to operate the system or transfer the system to another for operation by pursuant to the provisions of forty-seven U.S. Section five four seven. Subdivision eleven. miscellaneous provisions. A. Force majeure. Both the party shall not be held in default under or in noncompliance with the provisions of the franchise or suffer any enforcement or penalty relating to noncompliance or default, including termination, cancellation, or revocation of the franchise where such noncompliance or alleged defaults occurred or were caused by strike, riot, war, earthquake, flood, tidal wave, unusually severe rain or snowstorm, hurricane, tornado, or other catastrophic act of nature, labor disputes, failure of utility service necessary to operate the cable system, governmental administrative or judicial order or regulation or other event that is reasonably beyond the grantee's ability to anticipate or control. This provision also covers work delays caused by waiting for utility providers to service or monitor their own utility pools on which the grantee's cable or equipment is attached, as well as unavailability of materials or qualified labor to perform the work necessary. B. Notice. All notices shall be in writing and shall be sufficiently given, served upon the other party by hand delivery, first-class mail, registered or certified, return receipt requested, postage prepaid, or a reputable overnight courier service, and addressed as follows to the grantor. City manager, city of Duell, one hundred North Broadway, Duell, Minnesota, five six zero seven three. The city manager from the city of Duell, Minnesota shall be the officer that is responsible for the continuing administration of the franchise. With copies, two Roger H. Hipper, Duell City Attorney, P.O. Box two one four, Duell, Minnesota, five six zero seven three dash zero two one four. To the grantee. Comcast of Arkansas slash Florida slash Louisiana slash Minnesota slash Mississippi slash Tennessee, LLC. Ten River Park Plaza, St. Paul, Minnesota, five five one oh seven. Attention Regional Vice President. As to ordinance seventeen dash zero one nine to the grantee. Duell Telecom, comma, Inc., twenty-seven North Minnesota Street, Duell, Minnesota. Attention Cathy Long. C. Several ability. If any section, subsection, sentence, clause, phrase, or other portion of this franchise is for any reason declared invalid, yet or in part by any court, agency, commission, legislative body, or other authority of competent jurisdiction, such portion shall be deemed as a separate, distinct, and independent portion. Such declaration shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions hereof, which other portions shall continue in full force and effect. D. No waiver of rights. Nothing in this franchise shall be construed as a waiver of any rights substantive or procedural grantee may have under federal or state law unless such waiver is expressly stated herein. Subdivision twelve. Compliance with state and federal laws. Provisions of Minnesota state law that are required to be incorporated into this franchise and which are not otherwise already incorporated in this franchise are hereby specifically adopted and incorporated by reference. This includes but is not limited to the provisions of Minstat Section two three eight point zero eight four. Notwithstanding any of the provisions of this franchise, to the contrary, the grantee shall at all times comply with all state laws and rules regarding cable communications, not later than one year after they become effective unless otherwise stated, and to conform to federal laws and regulations regarding cable as they become effective. Subdivision thirteen. Liability and insurance. A. Grantee agrees by the acceptance of this franchise to indemnify a whole harmless grantor during the term of the franchise, and grantee shall maintain throughout the term of the franchise liability insurance in an amount as grantor may require, ensuring both grantor and grantee with regard to damages and penalties that they may legally be required to pay as a result of the exercise of the franchise. B. Nothing contained in this agreement and franchise relieves a person from liability arising out of the failure to exercise reasonable care to avoid injuring grantee's facilities while performing or connected upgrading, degrading, or changing the line of a street or public place or the construction or reconstruction of a sewer or water system. Subdivision fourteen. CATV Advisory Board. A. The city council shall establish and appoint a CATV Advisory Board consisting of five members. The membership of said CAT Advisory Board shall consist of one city councillor, who shall be appointed annually, one public utilities commissioner, who shall be appointed annually, and three members of the general public, who shall serve for three-year terms. The members of the general public appointed to serve on the CATV Advisory Board shall be appointed to stake in terms such that not more than one term will expire in each calendar year. B. The CATV Advisory Board shall advise the council on its regulatory jurisdiction and shall have the following responsibilities and duties. Small i. Monitor the performance of franchisee in executing the provisions of the franchise. Small ii. Advise the city council on the regulation of subscriber charges pursuant to the requirements of this ordinance. Small ii. Advise the city council on matters which might constitute violations of this franchise and recommend appropriate action. Small vi. Make recommendations to the city council concerning rates and services to be offered. Small vi. Work with franchisee and any organization created pursuant to this ordinance to operate community access cable casting, to encourage the use of community access services, and to explore the feasibility of new services. Small vi. Resulting disputes or disagreements between the subscribers and franchisees after an investigation, should the subscriber and franchisee not first be able to resolve their view or disagreements, said decision or findings may be appealed to the city council. Small vi. I. Review and audit over reports and filings submitted to the city as required hereunder, and such other correspondences may be submitted to city concerning the operations of the CATV system, and review files and regulations set by the franchise. Small vi. I. I. Assure that all tariffs, rates, and rules pertinence the operation of the CATV system are made available for inspection by the public at reasonable hours and upon reasonable requests. Small ix. Perform the periodic reviews and evaluations contemplated by subdivision seven A dash B hereof. Small x. Such other responsibilities and duties is may from time to time be assigned to it by the council. Subdivision fifteen. Acceptance of franchise. This franchise and every extension or removal thereof shall be accepted in writing by franchisee within thirty days after its passage by the city council of city. Such acceptance shall be construed to be an acceptance of and consent to all of the terms, conditions, and limitations contained in this franchise and also all of the provisions of this charter. This franchise shall not be binding upon the city until accepted by franchisee as provided in this subdivision. Subdivision sixteen. This ordinance shall be in effect and enforces thirty days after its passage approval and publication, adopted by the city council and city Duell this blank day of blank, twenty seventeen. Then Exhibit A. Number one, city offices at one hundred North Broadway Street. Number two, Public Library at seventeen North Broadway Street. Number three, Vogel Arena Park and Rec Office at one twenty-two South Garden Street. Rec Office at one twenty-two South Garden Street. As to ordinance seventeen dash zero one nine, exhibit A, number one, City offices at one hundred North Broadway Street; number two, Public Library at seventeen North Broadway Street; number three, Vogel Arena Park and Rec Office at one twenty-two South Garden Street. Exhibit B is Title forty-seven, Telecommunication, Chapter one, Federal Communications Commission, Subchapter C, Broadcast Radio Services, Part seventy-six, Multi-Channel Video and Cable Television Service. Subpart H, General Operating Requirements, Section seventy-six point three zero nine, Customer Service Obligations. A. The Cable Franchise Authority may enforce the customer service standards set forth in paragraph C of this section against cable operators. The franchise authority must provide affected cable operators ninety days written notice of its intent to enforce the standards. B. Nothing in this rule shall be construed to prevent or prohibit. Number one, a franchising authority and a cable operator are bringing to customer service requirements that exceed the standards set forth in paragraph C of this section. Two, a franchising authority from enforcing through the end of the franchise term pre-existing customer service requirements that exceed the standards set forth in paragraph C of this section and are contained in current franchise agreements. Three, any state or any franchising authority from enacting or enforcing any consumer protection law to the extent not specifically preempted herein. Or four, the establishment or enforcement of any state or municipal law or regulation concerning customer service that imposes customer service requirements that exceed or address matters not addressed by the standards set forth in paragraph C of this section. C. Effective July one, nineteen ninety-three, a cable operator shall be subject to the following customer service standards. Number one, cable system office hours and telephone availability. Small i. A cable operator will maintain a local toll-free or collect call telephone access line which will be available to its subscribers twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. A. Trained company representatives will be available to respond to customer telephone inquiries during normal business hours. B. After normal business hours, the access line may be answered by a service or automated response system, including an answering machine. Inquiries received after normal business hours must be responded to by a trained company representative on the next business day. Small i. I. Under normal operating conditions, telephone answer time by a customer representative, including wait time, shall not exceed thirty seconds when the connection is made. If the call needs to be transferred, transfer time shall not exceed thirty seconds. These standards shall be met no less than ninety percent of the time under normal operating conditions measured on a quarterly basis. Small i. 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 The operator will not be required to acquire equipment or perform surveys to measure compliance with the telephone answering standards above unless his and historical[1562.07]